Call meeting to order, Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission, October 10th, 2024. Pledge of Allegiance.
Fled allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fire evacuation. There should be a fire, an emergency. The exits are to my left, to your right, down the stairs, and the exits behind you. Please get as farthest away from the building as you can. Mr. Secretary, roll call, please.
Yes, Terrence Lynch.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Francis Alamo.
Here.
Joseph Muley.
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Christian D. Antonio.
Here.
Walter Crizell.
Here.
And John Petronella is here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to move item 17 after number three and before number four. Item 17?
Second.
Second. Made by, Mr. Commissioner Lynch, seconded by Walter. Any discussion? All in favor of moving?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, under number 17, other business. At this time, I'd like to announce that I'm going to be stepping aside as Chair. Due to time management and family obligations, I just don't have the time. You know, and last year, I kind of learned, you know, now that we go to Florida for two months in the wintertime. Last year, I, you know, I zoomed in and did the meeting. It was, you know, it was difficult, and it's not just that, it's everything else, meeting preparation, you know, communication with staff, getting ready. So it took a lot of time, and I don't think it's fair to all you guys up here. And, you know, it's not fair to my wife either, so, that's more importantly. So I think that at best that I, you know, step aside. You know, that's two months. I know we're going to Sicily, we have a family wedding this year, and maybe even going twice. So that'd be another month. So I don't have the proper, appropriate amount of time to do this. It takes more than I thought. I mean, I tried, and I didn't. I am retired, and I kind of checked myself, too, saying, what the heck am I doing here? I mean, supposed to be retired. But being the Chair takes a lot more time than I thought. So I really want to thank all the members, all the members up here, you're a great team, helping me along. Staff, I'd like to thank staff as well for all your help. And the rest of the staff, Town Attorney's Office, Town Manager's Office, Rick, everybody, all, you know, any time I reached out to you guys for help, when I waved the flag, you were there for me, so, thank you. And so at that, at this time, I would like to see if, I'd like to entertain a motion for a new Chair.
Mr. Chair, sorry to see you depart, but I understand, you know, commitment's commitment and families first and so forth, but at this time, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Linda DeGray as Chairwoman.
Thank you, and I'd like to second that motion. I'd like to second it, and any discussion? Very good. I think Linda would be an excellent Chair. I think she's been a member up here for, what, Linda, 10 years now?
Twelve.
Twelve years, sorry. And she is very thorough. She's right on point, and she actually reads every word that we have in front of us. She's very, very good, and she's very versed. She's fair, and I think she'll do a tremendous job as Chair. And I wish you all the luck, and we will have a vote. Mr. Secretary, we'll do a roll call vote for this.
Yes, Frank Alamo.
For Linda.
Kenneth Holinsky.
For Linda.
Vinnie Grillo.
For.
Joseph Muley.
For.
Terrence Lynch.
For.
Christian D. Antonio.
For.
Walter Crizell.
For.
John Petronella is for, and Linda DeGray.
For.
All in favor, none against?
Well, thank you, and I want to make it clear that Frank is not leaving the board. He is staying, but, you know, he's just stepping aside.
Just to ask that.
Because he made it sound like he was leaving.
No, I'm staying, I'm staying.
He's staying, he's staying, but this will just give him more time.
Yeah.
For himself, so.
And so I think we ought to stay in the same seats.
Yeah, we're not going to move around.
So what I'd like to do at this time, formally present you with a gift that I received when I became Chair. What you get for your efforts is the gavel.
Wow.
And you also received this wonderful, beautiful Tiffany stopwatch.
Wow, thank you, Frank.
Congratulations. Good luck. You're very welcome.
Why don't the Chairman sit in the middle there?
I wanted to switch, and she doesn't want to switch tonight.
No, I don't, no.
Because the public will see you.
They'll see me here. Next, next meeting. Next meeting.
I offered that, and Ms. Linda said no.
Nope, we've done this in the past, it's quite all right.
Well, thank you again, everybody, very much, I appreciate all your help. And again, Linda, if you would.
Sure.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion for the approval of minutes of September 24.
So moved. Second.
Any comments, corrections? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
One abstention.
Okay.
What's that?
No.
No, that was, uh...
That was last month, this is, this is...
Yeah, I wrote it down.
No, it was to move, it was to, I'm sorry, Linda, it was to move 17 underneath, uh, number three.
Oh, okay, all right.
Move 17 under three.
Right.
Now you can do it.
Right, okay, I'm sorry, oh, sorry.
There you go.
All right. Approval of the minutes, I need a motion again. Second.
Second again.
All right. Any comments, corrections? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
One abstention.
And one abstention, okay. We received Attorney's Report, and I don't, we don't have a zoning enforcement at this time. Open the meeting up to public participation. Anybody in the audience who'd like to speak for or against anything that is not on our agenda, please come forward.
These are very important notes, they're on a napkin.
A napkin? Have you been to a bar?
I was. Mary Ann Turner, Seven Meadow Road. Couple weeks I came in front of you regarding Pheasant Hill. I tried to explain why it's important that that organize, that property, which is all one piece, should not have been expanded. I didn't, I don't think I clearly made you understand. So now you have done it, and I'm going to ask you to have them come in with a completely new site plan for the whole property since you've made this change. You need to keep in mind, they own pin to pin on the property, the house, the building they purchased. They do not own the land that is exclusive use area. And when this property was designed back in the early 90s, many times, and none of you were here, they came in wanting to build what they wanted to build. They started at one point to wanting to build apartments. Those went by the wayside. They then thought of building homes, which would have put about 13 back there. They came back with the planned residential development because there was a tiny little loophole in our regulations that they found, and I give them credit, that didn't say they had to be attached, which is what your condos are, they're attached. So that's how you ended up with this one development, and you have one coming down the pike that you've already approved that will be coming in on Washington Road. When you make decisions as Commissioners, previous or future, it matters to the town as a whole. And I'm asking you to understand, take the time, know the history. Really and truly, I don't think you understand what Pheasant Hill is, and I think when you have now made this decision, you've opened it up, like I always say, Pandora's Box. There's nothing I can do to make you change this. I have already looked into it unless I want it to take you to court. I was annoyed, don't take it the bad way, when the woman said on the dais that I am being mean to her, or why do I hate her so much? This is not personal to me. This is about the rules. We have planning and zoning rules for a reason. If you don't like a regulation, rewrite it, but do not ignore it. So these were built as clustered housing, which is one of the things in '24 you all want. There was a specific deal struck with the original builder, Mr. Liasca, who's no longer there. The people who live there, there's not a lot that are the same from when they first came. So if the opportunity comes in front of you in the future, and I am going to guarantee you it will, you need to understand what they built and what they own. If I want to expand on my neighbor's property, and I come in here and tell you how nice I am, I doubt very much you're going to let me build my extended patio on their land. But that's exactly what you did. You don't have to agree with me, I don't agree with you, but I'm asking you in the future, Pheasant Hill is going to keep, I don't want to say break the rules, I don't think the people who live there are intentionally, they see this property they own as their home as a house. So the end result is, they're going to come back and ask you for future things. I am under the impression that you're going to take a walk out there, that you're going to try to understand it from what's not supposed to be there, like extra sheds and where they put things in the buffer, or where exactly is the buffer? I'm asking you to take your time, walk it with your clipboards, and if you don't know what the violation is, your staff should, and if they don't know, then maybe we need to have a conversation. Because I've lived this for over 30 years, and every spring, the trimming starts and the building starts. So we'll leave this one at the moment, there's nothing we can do, but in the future, please think about it.
Thank you. Anyone else in, anyone else for third and last time? Public participation is closed. I would like to do one more thing before we continue on. I would entertain a motion to move item 13 and 14 up to under, after nine. Continued public hearing and new public hearing, seeing we only have a small agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Okay, we don't have any bond releases?
Excuse me, who is the second?
Terrence.
Well, all right, they're going to fight.
Either way.
No, arm wrestle.
We're good.
We're good, okay.
Voices are very similar, so...
Okay. We don't have any bond releases. Authorization for administrative approval, SPR 1941 917 Enfield Street. What's going on with that, Lori?
So, so, that one is the One Love Jamaican Restaurant, right down the street here. Within their restaurant, they have three little seating tables for residents to come in, order food, sit and eat. She would like to replace those tables with some small shelves and turn that portion of the takeout restaurant to sell merchandise relating to the restaurant. So it would be limited goods, Caribbean-type style products, and just limited merchandise. So she's just replacing the seating with shelves.
Okay, all right.
And then there's one more thing, if I may, Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind moving item 18A right below 9B. It was actually received on the 26.
19A?
Yep, the, the application, oh, 18A, apologies. The SPR 1942 3 Mammoth Road is also an admin approval.
Okay, I did have questions on that, so I'd really prefer to leave that right there for, right this second, okay? Because that's going to, you got to educate me a little on that one.
No worries.
All right, thank you. Okay, continued public hearing, PH 3105, 140 Brewster Road. Applicant, if you'd come forward.
Just in case you don't have that.
Oh, thanks.
I don't think you can hear that.
I don't think so.
So, both the letter?
Okay, staff want to give us any updates?
Good evening. So the applicant kind of did homework for himself. We received a little packet of information that the applicant submitted, just some additional, additional facts that he thought would be pertinent for the application, but I'm going to let him explain that part. I ended up writing a quick update in my memo, just reiterating what was spoken at, at the last meeting, about how the, how the truck doesn't satisfy the gross vehicle weight or the amount of axles. That's all.
Okay.
Good evening, Commission.
Name and address, please.
My name is Lorenzo Lewis, 140 Brewster Road, Enfield, Connecticut, that's the Hazardville section.
Sorry. Hannah Lewis, 140 Brewster Road, Enfield, Connecticut.
And the little one?
Oh, sorry. This is, thank you. This is Romeo Henry Lewis, 140 Brewster Road in Enfield, Connecticut.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, sir.
So, good evening, thank you for seeing me again. As Ms. Driver said, I, you guys had a lot of concerns. Vinnie, I believe, was the first one to bring the noise concern at the, at the last meeting. Just a lot of questions that we didn't expect. So my wife and I decided to go through, and I'm not sure if this is the first time you guys are getting to take a look at the packet, but we decided to go through some different points in relevance to where the vehicle is parked and do the decibel meters. So if you look at the first page, in image A, this picture is taken, and this decibel reading is taken right on the property line next to 132 Brewster. So as you see in the image, just a little bit past my fence is where my property line is. If you look at the decibel meter reading, I know Ms. Driver said your older documents compare truck sounds to 100 decibels, so I just wanted to get that cleared up. It looks like the, the meter reading from that point is 34.5. If you look at the bottom of the meter, it actually compares what that sounds like. It's comparable to a whisper or light snoring. Now, if we go to number two. Number two, across the street directly, image B. So this is actually taken, a taken photo from the property 96 Sheridan Road, right on the edge. If you look at the image, you can see the, the edge of the road is right there, so I'm not all the way, like, back the other 30 feet where their actual house is, but I'm right there on the edge of their property, and you can see that is 36.5 decibels, which is also comparable to a whisper or light snoring. And this is why the vehicle is idling. Across the street from Sheridan Road, I'm not sure, on Sheridan Road on the, the right side, I'm not sure what that address is off the top of my head.
Hill Road, I think.
It's Hill Road?
Hill Road.
Hill Road, okay. My wife says it's Hill Road. Wife is always right. So on that, that section right there, and that, and that, you could see I'm a little bit onto the sidewalk there. We have 34 decibels, which is also comparable to a whisper or light snoring. If you go to number four, which is, I have here is image D, this is right behind our property's fence, which is, I believe that's 116 Sheridan Road's property line. We are at 31.3 decibel, which is also comparable to a whisper or light snoring. And in number five, you can see me standing right next to my truck, and while it's running, it is 59.8 decibels, which is comparable to a conversation. I just wanted to put that into perspective for the committee, because I know, I know that was a big thing that was brought up at the last meeting. I know Mr. Gray had that concern, and I know Mr. Grillo had that concern, so I wanted to address that concern. So number six, if you guys have a minute to see, I want to talk about the wintertime and idling. So my vehicle, as we talked about at the last meeting, it's a diesel engine that was built in 2018. It uses a DEF system. Those of you that are familiar with DEF, it's a newer system, the older trucks just didn't use it, I believe before 2010, if my research was correct. So the thing about them, you don't want to actually idle these engines. The longer you have them on, you can actually mess up the engine. So because of the fact that you, the eggs, that stuff has to cycle through the exhaust system and actually exit through it, so you need the vehicle running and, and moving. This being said, it will never be idling at the residence for longer than three to five minutes, and never has. But I just wanted to address that concern, because I know Mr. Grillo had that concern as well throughout the, the wintertime, and so did Mrs. DeGray. All right, so number seven here. So we're in the residential zone. Now, we're in a truck-friendly neighborhood, there's a lot of, there's a very active truck business, it's down the street, on North Street, it loads and unloads in-house, we have a large fleet trucking company on Moody Road, everything is right there. I know in the last meeting, we established that the residential zone actually starts on Taylor Road. Now, from my house, I think we, I think we looked, as you said, is about roughly 1,000 feet. When I, exclusively, that's where I exit and enter. Our property is right down Sheridan, so get out of my driveway, stop at the stop sign, drive down Sheridan Road, the 1,000 feet, and I'm on Taylor Road. This, this whole process takes, I think we established at the last minute, at the last meeting, about three minutes to start the vehicle, and then leaving and getting to Taylor Road is, I want to say, another two minutes. So I just wanted to put that in perspective, that we're right next to the, the industrial zone, because I know that was pointed out at the, at the last meeting, that that was an industrial zone. I had a question about screening, but I want to circle back to that, at number eight. If we go to, if we can go over to page nine, number nine, sorry. All right. And please stop me if you have questions about anything that I'm saying, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, all right. So number nine, the, the gross vehicle weight, 80,000 pounds. So I know Ms. Driver changed it to not satisfied, so I wanted to talk a bit about that. So gross vehicle weight by FMCSA and DOT standards, it's the weight of the vehicle, you know, it's the allowable weight, let me, let me read it verbatim, it's defined as the maximum allowable weight the vehicle has been engineered by its manufacturer to safely carry. This being said, I don't believe when your regulations were written...
Excuse me, sir?
Yep.
Please don't inter, inter, try to interpret our regulations. Even does, our regulations are regulations. It doesn't matter if they're old, doesn't matter if they're new, our regulations are regulations.
Okay. Well, that cancels everything I have to say, all right.
All right, okay.
I, I think I had an important thing to say about that, but it's okay.
No, okay, you, you want to talk about the screening.
No, I, I really think that gross vehicle weight is important. If you could just let me...
Go right ahead.
...finish my thought, I would really appreciate it.
But you're trying to, you're trying to say our regulations are outdated, and they're not worth obeying, so that's where I was going to stop.
I don't think the public ever heard me say those words.
Well, you were leading that way.
No, I, I wasn't.
My, I, I misunderstood you then, but go ahead.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. So, so the gross vehicle weight, I don't believe when the regulations were, were written, they were referring to a daycap tractor or a, or a tractor in general, being that, obviously, later on in the regulations, they say something about tractors and trailers. So I wanted to, the, the gross weight of maximum of 26,000 pounds, it looks like they were, if, if I'm reading this correctly, it looks like they were referring to, and if you can flip to the next page on number 11, I have a comparison photo, it looks like what they were referring to is a vehicle like the one to the left of the photo of my vehicle. Now, if you see this vehicle, it is, it is a Freightliner box truck. It has a 22-foot trailer. The, the difference is, it has a permanently affixed trailer. So with these, with these permanently affixed trailers, the gross vehicle weight is very relevant to, to your regulations of parking because of the fact that at any given point, which I think Mr. Petronella was alluding to last time, what would stop me from bringing 80,000 pounds home? These permanently affixed trailers, there is nothing stopping them from being 26,000 pounds home. So that having a gross vehicle weight of 26,000 pounds actually matters to your regulation, where for me, what stops me from bringing 80,000 pounds home is the fact that I do not have a permanently affixed trailer. I would have to be a combination vehicle in order to have 80,000 pounds. And the reason why the DOT has us actually display 80,000 on our door for these tractors, or whatever your gross vehicle weight is, because some of them are 34,000, or 46,000, et cetera, is because any time you would pull into a weigh station, you would have to have a trailer on. There are times when you do not have a trailer on while you're driving, and you're not expected to pull into a weigh station. So that gross vehicle weight is not relevant to the DOT unless I have a trailer. So I just wanted to expand on that a bit, because I, I believe when the, when it was written, because it also has the line about the tractor trail, the tractors or the trailers, I believe when it was written, it was referring to this vehicle, which is bigger than mine, wider than mine, and makes the same noise decimal output that you guys would have proved based on your current regulations. So I just wanted to point that out. And then, let's see here. I believe that's, that's, that's it for now, unless, that I, that I had to say, if you guys had any questions, you can...
Okay. Okay, Vinnie?
I, I hope I addressed everything, but I'm, I'm here to answer anything.
Just two questions.
Yep.
No matter how it's written out, is it over 11,000 gross vehicle weight?
Yes.
Okay. Does it have more than two axles?
Correct, yes, it has three.
Okay, so there's two strikes right there.
Okay.
Period, that's what it says. I, I can't change that.
Okay.
None of us can. Okay, that's what it's written. You showed us a picture of that box truck, how many axles are on that box truck?
Two axles.
Okay, so there's a difference, two or three. So it doesn't matter what your truck can carry, it's totally against our regulations. I feel bad, believe me when I tell you. I understand, you pay your taxes, you, that's your property.
Yep.
But your neighbors pay their taxes, and that's their property also.
Right.
Next, so it's a large truck. Why this is tabled to tonight, I have no clue. It should have been done with the last time you were here. It's, it's over both of these, it's over 11,000, it has that, so...
So I read a part of the regulations that says that if you, you can, that it was, sorry, I don't have that. Oh, wait, yes, I do.
Whatever you need, I'm sure we can get it for you.
By special permit, one commercial vehicle exceeding the requirements referred to in paragraph one may be parked or garage in a lot, subject to the special permit standards. So I, I, I was, I wouldn't have even came here if 11,000 pounds was the question, just to throw that out there, because it's highlighted...
Did you know about the 11,000 pounds?
Yes, I did, but, but that highlighted section two there says, by special permit, one commercial vehicle exceeding the, the requirements referred to in paragraph I may be parked.
And I understand you, I'm one person out of 10 of us up here, I'm just telling you...
Oh, I know, I just wanted to...
You said yours, and I just said mine.
...to let you know why I came back, because that was, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have even applied, I wouldn't have paid my money to come here if, if I didn't think that there was some reasonable...
All right. Anyone else have any? Vinnie? Go ahead.
I don't have any questions, but I want to make some comments. I don't have any questions, I'd like to make some comments, but maybe we should wait until the public hearing is...
All right, um, all right. Oh.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to...
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that we got a couple of handouts tonight with letters from Willie Lowman, Cheryl Hillard, that I would like to make sure are in the record of the public hearing.
Yes, I have copies of those and I do want to.
Okay.
Let you guys know. So my wife and I, you know, of our tent, we did, we went through the process of finding who wrote these letters because the first two that came in here were anonymous. We did our research. Cheryl Hillard and John Goley and Cheryl Hillard again are, all three from 96 Sheridan Road. It's the husband and wife. So three of the four of these letters are the same two people who did not come here tonight. So I, I, you know, and they, and this is, this is a neighbor that, you know, has, they frequent our house, they, you know, coming over to say hi to us, you know, with their dog and stuff. They've never expressed a problem. So the first time we're finding about, out about them having an issue that we want to obviously address and make right was finding out who submitted these letters. Willie Lowman, for that one, that is not someone that exists in Enfield, Connecticut. That is a fictional character from the 1940s. There's a movie. So I, I just want to establish that these are, there, there, three of the four of them are from the same house, 96 Sheridan Road, and one of them is a fictional character.
Or at least we couldn't find them.
Unless, unless Willie Lowman is here.
Why I asked to have them in the record?
Yeah.
They were delivered to us.
Yeah, oh, no, absolutely.
Or they should be in the record.
Absolutely, yes. I just wanted, I just want to make sure everyone's clear who they are.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have comments? Anyone in the public like to speak or against? Okay, I'm going to ask you to take a seat while the public comes forward. Name and address, please. Hi Karen.
Got to turn to look, see the chairman now.
I'm sorry.
Just tonight.
Just tonight. I like my seat.
Karen LaPlant, 166 North Maple Street. As a citizen, sitting at home watching last, at the last meeting, I was appalled with your lengthy discussion on trying to make this application work in a residential zone. The gentleman stated, none of his neighbors have complained to him about the truck. So he concludes, there isn't a problem. Well, somebody did complain by entering a See Click Fix posting. Nobody wants to be put in the position of reporting their neighbors if there is a problem or a violation, but someone saw a problem and it needs to be addressed. The zoning enforcement officer did his job. He, by notifying the owner that his truck was in violation of the zoning regulations and he is here in front of you. I don't know why the regulation, the regulations I read are very clear. You are the commissioners that are here to enforce the zoning regulations, not bend them. Maybe this gentleman didn't get taught at the training center that certain sized trucks have different restrictions put on them by towns and states. Maybe he knew and just decided to do it until he got caught. I don't know. It doesn't matter that the industrial area down the street allows trucks. This is a totally residential zone and it is not allowed. I also want to point out that I don't believe we can restrict truck traffic on certain roads, as stated at the last meeting either. We can ask that trucks don't use roads, but we can't enforce it. I believe the police department has said time and time again, they cannot enforce that, so it shouldn't be repeated at meetings. I don't know why this commission had to go into the lengthy discussion about whether the truck is noisy, has a trailer or not, the meaning of GVW, or whether it uses DEF, whatever that is. Simply put, your regulations in section 3.30.13B state, all commercial vehicles, regardless of GVW, shall meet the following standards. I, no vehicle shall have more than two axles. XII, no tractor-trailer nor tractor or the trailer shall be parked in a residential district at any time except in connection with a moving operation. That was pointed out by one of your commissioners. None of you wanted to listen. It should have been the end of the story. Also, the update posted on the website for the staff report memo revised on 10/4/24 quotes the definition of gross weight and the quote is incorrect. Quote, "In the case of the tractor-trailer unit, gross weight means the lightweight of a tractor plus the lightweight of the trailer or semi-trailer plus the weight of the load thereon, not of the person." I can see if you read that, you're going to think, oh, well, you only have to add the weight of the guy in the truck.
It's in our, it's in our, she's not, she's not insulting.
And I looked up the statute and I said, why would it say of the person? That doesn't make sense. Somebody made a mistake. All right. But this is immaterial to this issue as stated before. This truck does not meet the allowed standards. Section 3.30.13H also goes on to say, pursuant to section, section Connecticut General Statutes 8-6, the Zoning Board of Appeals is prohibited from varying any provision of this section. So regarding him paying his taxes, I understand, we all pay taxes, but there are a lot of truck drivers out there that have to park their trucks in industrial zones legally and have to pay taxes on that property also. So they have to take that expense into account when they run their business. So we are enabling this gentleman by allowing him to be in residential zone. He needs to find a nice industrial zone where he can rent a parking space for his truck when it is not in use. There are plenty out there, he only needs to look. I wish him success in his career. Starting a new business is a learning, learning experience and trucking is an excellent way to support your new family and it's a lovely family. But, you know, as the public participation said, you have to follow your regulations and the regulations say it's not allowed.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mary Ann Turner, Seven Meadow Road. I'm actually going to speak to you from experience. I live on a small street, has six houses on it. On that street was a tractor-trailer parked and a, and a very large box truck. And you know how your regulation got written? Because I came in front of a council, a commissioner, not you, previously, and asked them to fix a problem. I was curious about his decibel readings. When I, in the summertime, I live on the East Windsor Line, I can actually hear the airport when the planes are starting. Think about how far away they are. My neighbor was a long-haul driver and they only came home on a, like a Saturday, Sunday, and then they left again. And when they started that truck at 3:00 AM, that truck woke the whole neighborhood up. Now, I know that if you get deliveries to your house and you happen to work from your office, like I do, I can hear the trucks coming down my street. I'm in my office, the windows are closed. Okay, so the other part of having a truck in your neighborhood is that when they start it, I don't, and I cannot speak to the year, make or model, it makes a noise that turns the truck on and then it idles, but that's really not the issue. When the truck starts to leave your neighborhood, it has to shift through the gears to get out. I will let you know that during the time that my neighbor was in the neighborhood with their truck and they drove for Fred X, the whole neighborhood was up at 3 o'clock and everybody hated it. Now, we did like our neighbors, you know, they were great people, but this was a problem. And when to make it insult to injury, it then added a second truck in our neighborhood. And that one, they used to start it in the same timeline of 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, except they didn't move it out of their driveway. They just left it in their driveway and they were less than 20 feet from my neighbor's bedroom window. So not only did they have noise, they also had fumes. So when you sit and say that there is no noise, there is noise. And it's a much different noise, as you all know, at night. So one of the things that I found curious, and I will not elaborate because Ms. LaPlant kind of hit all the, the high points, is I also own a small business. And for 30 years, I had to follow the rules that were put upon me by the town of Enfield. And if one of them was that I wanted to have a truck, I needed to put it where it belonged. And where that belongs is in a industrial zone parking spot. Now, where I live, which is totally on the other side of town, Depot Road has a company there that will rent spots. And I would suggest that's where it goes. And if you, even if the person lives near an industrial site, they are not an industrial site and that's why we have different regulations for that. You've already touched on the things that absolutely blow your regulations, that makes it clear that you, this is something you should deny. But one of the things, if you haven't had the time, and I know that many of you drive through towns often enough, is it's not very hard to find tractor-trailers parked, when I mean tractors, excuse me, the tractors parked in people's driveway. I didn't even have to leave Thompsonville or in that District 2 section or in that area. These trucks are parked in people's driveways and they shouldn't be there. And that's why See Click Fix needs to be more, used more often. This is not just something that harms one neighborhood, it harms the whole town. Once you make decisions in one spot, you open up again the Pandora's Box for the future. So I'm sitting here telling you and I'm asking you, it's not just about, about the noise that he thinks he's telling you it is or it isn't. There is noise, it will disrupt the neighborhood and maintenance will be done, even if it's just cleaning the truck out, because that will have to be done. So I am asking you to, to please deny this request. This isn't where it belongs. The reason you have the regulation is because it's a problem to the town and you do not want to expand this problem as far as it will go. Because I will guarantee you, commissioners, you will get a truck parked next door to you because you will. It will happen and you won't like it. So I'm asking you to deny the application. It doesn't belong in a residential zone.
Anyone else like to speak? Name and address for the record, please.
William Fabrizio, 86 Douglas Road. I live down the street from, from the Lowmans. I'm sorry, Lewis's, he got that name in my head now. So I, I'm going to be honest, I didn't know that this was in the, the ordinances before the sign went up on his, on his lawn saying there was going to be a hearing. I missed last week or I would have been here. I just usually try to keep my head down and mind my own business, but what the previous ladies have said before kind of strikes a chord with me. Shortly, firstly, I tried emailing all of you. I got no responses. I don't know if anybody actually got it.
We don't respond to your emails directly.
Okay, but you got them. Okay, cool. So just to go over and for the record, shortly after the, that truck showed up at 140 Brewster, a truck showed up immediately behind me at 141 Green Manor. And there's another one that shows up at 28 Webster. Now, that one's the worst offender of the law because before they ripped up Webster for Public Works, that, that gentleman was parked on the sidewalk in the road, just complete disregard for any of the rules of the highway. Again, I must echo that I, I concur that the rules are fairly, they're, they're, they're pretty solid. One thing I would like to point out, being an engineer, the regulations state for the, for the noise, 45 dB, and I don't know if you guys know as much as I do about noise and whatnot. The DB is for decibels, A is the, the weighting factor given to the noise. It tends to favor the middle of the sound range, the sound spectrum that the human ear can pick up, and it doesn't put much stress on the lower frequencies, such as you would get driving a diesel. Now, I know, because I, I myself drive a diesel, it's a station wagon, but it's still, it, it makes a fair amount more noise than, than the cars, the gasoline cars that I had before. Now, I, I do feel for the Lewis's that they've started this, this new business and they've got a.
Brand new spanking baby boy.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Um, but rules are rules. My next door neighbor, John Plisick, who couldn't be here this evening, he's a truck driver. He has a truck that he owns and runs through an LLC. And 20 some odd years ago, he tried to do what Mr. Lewis did and he parked on his, on his yard and the cops roused him in the middle of the night and told him, sorry, you can't do this. We'll let you get off this time, but you got to find somewhere else to park. So he did and he's been following the rules for 20 years, paying to have his, his spot rented. And he actually hasn't been driving for a few months because of various economic factors, cost of diesel, so on and so forth. So he, it's just parked there. I have a feeling that that's the same reason why the, the truck showed up behind me is it's just, it's just parked there, because it costs a lot to run those, those trucks these days. And again, I feel, I feel for Mr. Lewis, but the rules are the rules and they should be enforced that way. Otherwise, it's just going to be whack-a-mole. And, you know, there's, there's three people I've already identified without even really trying in my neighborhood alone that will come here and they will also seek an exemption to park on their, their, their driveways or lawns or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do you want to add or address any of the things that were said?
I, I wasn't aware so many people were experiencing grievances and results of truck drivers owning trucks in this town. And I, you know, I, I will say, you know, it's, I, I can't, I can't, I can't say that I understand and it might be that I'm in the, because I'm in the industry and I drive a vehicle and I, I have been for two years and that I, you know, like I understand more how they work. But, you know, when, when people have grievances, they have their reasons and that is okay. So that's, that's all I can really add. I, I will agree with Mr. Williams' point that, you know, there's, there's a lot of trucks around town. I feel that I am the only one trying to do things right. I believe I apologized to everyone at the last meeting. I don't know if the three that just saw, heard that, but at the last meeting, I did apologize because I, I just bought this truck and I brought it home in June and I did not know that there was a process to this. Otherwise, I would have applied. So I, so I do apologize for that, but I would want to, I do want to address that because I, I know the, the lady that spoke said that she believed I might have known and just tried to get away with it and I want to make that clear. That's not how it is. We are a family that tries to do everything right and that's why I came here as soon as I got the letter. So that's all my comments there.
Okay. Anyone else like to address? Okay. I will entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Okay. You want to make some comments?
Oh, do you need to talk? Anybody have any?
You want to close the motion?
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I just want, just to kind of answer what Vinnie was saying and some of the, oh, sorry, some of the discussion. I think it, there was members struggling and the discussion went on for a long time. So I think that's why, you know, it got tabled. I don't think everybody was a little frustrated and trying to see how we could be nice to the customers or the taxpayer and figure out what was going on. But I received a lot of inquiries about the agenda and, as you heard when I was talking before, part of my duties as chair is to get the agenda ready. And the inquiries were to why this was even. And the inquiries were to why this was even on the agenda, because it obviously has three axles, and it doesn't comply to the regulation at all. So what's working with staff, when we, when they tell us there's an application to come, it just says "commercial vehicle", and we kind of don't know anything about it, other than that. So staff, once they take in the application, a statutory clock starts to tick, once they receive it, correct?
Yes, sir.
So when it comes to the Thursday before the meeting, my duties are to look at the agenda and just kind of see how things are lined up. But when it's taken in, I can't take it off the agenda, because the clock's ticking. So staff's got, I know, maybe in the future, if you see something like this, that is definitely blatant, that it doesn't, you know, it's against our code, maybe not take it in. Because I think it kind of put us in a little bit of a difficult situation, you know, and everybody trying to figure out, you know, what we have, and, you know, what can we do? Because, you know, we do want to show compassion to our citizens. And I think it did go on for a long time, but back to the agenda, I don't think me as a chair, or any other chair, can take something off when that statutory clock starts to tick. Is that correct?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'd like to explain that a little bit. When we get an application in, and we think that it may not get approved, we will advise the applicant of that. And this applicant was advised of that in the memo. So with that said, we have to take it in, because staff can't decide whether or not it's going to get approved or not. We don't do the approvals. This commission does. So if somebody comes in and says, "I want to put a Walmart in the middle of this residential area," we have to take it in. We will advise them that it will be denied. But we can't tell them that they can't make application. So we do try to advise the applicants as best we can. And I think that this gentleman wanted to take his chances and move forward, and-
I just want to clarify that point now. I was advised, you know, by Mr. Rick Rochelli and Ms. Georgie Driver, that I could be denied. But I was not advised that I would be denied. So I know you just said that they advised you that you would. But I was, what I was advised was that, you know, your truck does not meet, this does not meet this. So just so you know, there is a chance you could be denied, I want you to look for other options just in case this does get denied. I just want to clarify that for the public, because you said that, what you said was that you'd tell them that you would be denied. And that's not what I was told. Otherwise, I wouldn't have gone through with this.
If I said what I misspoke-
I appreciate that.
The possibility is that you would be denied.
Yes.
Because it's an application being presented to us that-
Right.
That we don't think- That doesn't, that three axles, he's out. I mean-
Right, three axles.
Right. And if I was told that, I absolutely would have just been like, okay, three axles, no matter what, it's done. I wouldn't have even came up here.
And you can see, we were struggling.
Yes. And I appreciate that. Like, I want to let everyone know that you guys appreciate.
Maybe you find an off-site parking place, or else. You know, we were really, really struggling, and we're all compassionate up here. And we want to try to do the best we can.
Absolutely.
But, you know, having that, and again, I don't, the process about taking applications, and maybe we, I don't know what the law is, but could have gone to ZBA, would have been a better avenue for them? Not even ZBA?
ZBA cannot vary.
I mean, it's not-
It's, this-
Madam Chair, yeah, I just wanted to make a point that I don't have the authority to pull something off the agenda.
No, of course you don't. And we can't deny, we cannot deny an applicant from putting in an application, whether or not it complies with the zoning regulations or not. That is not our decision.
It was a misunderstanding, sir.
We can only guide them.
That it would-
I did not know this would be straight-up denied based on what was in the regulations.
Yeah, because it doesn't meet the requirements.
Yeah, that was, what it was-
That was actually, I'm sorry to interrupt, but in my memo, it was in my first memo, first comment, that the truck exceeds the allowance of axles. And we did mention that multiple times. That was part of the notice of violation when it came in.
Right.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just wanted to-
Okay.
Go ahead.
Maybe I don't know what that means.
Okay, thank you. I did some research on the DBAs. And I found that the town, code of the town of Enfield does specify noise levels for residential areas. Okay? So if you look at residential day, and they are in DBAs, so they're affecting, they're essentially saying the standard for us in our code is DBA. Okay? So the residential daytime hours, the maximum allowable DBA is 55. Residential nighttime hours, the maximum residential DBA is 45. Okay? So if you look at the applicant's numbers, all of the numbers, with the exception of you right next to the cab, basically meet the criteria for the town of Enfield code.
That's correct, yeah.
So from the town of Enfield standpoint, it's not a big noise issue for you to be idling in the driveway. Now, there weren't, there isn't any data on when you change the gears, or anything like that, so I'm not sure about that. But-
Yeah, I don't have a standard.
If you take the data that you gave us, in all instances, except the one next to the cab, which is probably not an issue for the neighbors.
Yeah.
You do meet the criteria. So I just wanted to make that clear. So we need to understand how these kinds of things affect our applications. The second thing I wanted to talk about is, and I understand how our regulations are firm, and we're talking about the two axles versus the three axles. But if you look at the picture that the applicant had put in on number 11, on his thing, he's got the picture of the truck versus his tractor. I mean, to me, I mean, there's no comparison. I mean, we allow this truck here, with the big blocking back on it, and we don't allow this truck.
But you're assuming that-
Based on the regulations, you actually do. That's why I put that picture there.
And that truck meets the regulations.
That that truck meets everything that you have under regulations.
So it does. Does it?
Okay.
If you disagree, that's fine. Okay, actually, go ahead. So the third thing is, I'm really dismayed that there are other tractor and trailers in driveways around town. And it sounds like there's a lot of them.
Yeah, there's quite a few. Like, I passed one on Town Farm today.
To step up our enforcement.
Yes, we do.
And get those people out of the driveways. Because if people are seeing tractor trailers around town parked in driveways, then they think they can do it too.
And that's the-
So that's a problem. So we need to beef up our enforcement staffing.
It just sounds like I'm the only one that actually applied. I know during the last meeting, Ms. Georgie said that this is the first application of the kind. And as Mr. Williams said, if you just drive the roads, there's plenty of tractor trailers everywhere. It's not, well, I'm sorry, plenty of tractors in driveways. It's not just mine.
Dad, you have to count the axles. If it's two, it's good. If it's three, it's not.
No, they're three. They're three. Same, that's very common. There's actually a whole sleeper cab on Town Farm Road, so. Just pictures of it today.
It sounds like we have some things to work on.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
We are in the middle of updating our zoning regulations, and we can readdress this while we do that, and see if we want to change it. But right now, the regulations state what they state, and we have to adhere to that.
That's perfectly fine, Ms. Whitten. You know what? I'm going to be honest with you. I'm not going to lose sleep over this. I'm not going to reapply. I'm not going to come here for the zoning update. I think that that's something that, you know, the committee here has seen, that, you know, change is good. And I think that I've given enough information that, you know, in February, when you guys do address the zoning regs, if you guys want to update them, great. If you don't, then you know what? Like, I did something good by at least showing you guys why they do need to be changed, especially for small people like me that, you know, just started something to try to build their family. And that's all I can, that's all I can, that's all I can really-
Okay. One more thing. I don't know if you got the memo from our town attorney, because I did ask for a legal opinion.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I did, I did see that.
And he was very, very clear, and he said, "No."
Well, he established, yeah, he highlighted the exact same points that you brought up. So that was you asking if, for his opinion. Yes, I did see that.
So, anybody else? I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
Mr. Secretary, would you like to?
I don't know if it's open for discussion.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Excuse me, just a couple of things I wanted to point out. If we were to look at-
I'm sorry, Mr. Petronelli, I don't mean to interrupt you, but Ms. Whitten, I think, is tired of hearing this. And I, you know, don't want to beat myself over the head while, you know, I'm already down. I already have to figure out something for my business. Thank you, public, for hearing this. Thank you for watching. I appreciate all of you. Congrats on your promotion. Thank you, Mr. Alamo, for giving me the continuation. Thank you all for hearing me. Have a good night, okay?
Well, with that, I'll make a motion to approve public hearing number 3105140 Brewster Road, application to locate a commercial vehicle at 140 Brewster Road pursuant to Section 3.30.13 and Section 9.20. Lorenzo and Hannah Lewis, applicant owner, map 111, lot 158, R33 Zone, with the 23 conditions listed.
Okay. Roll call. A second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Frank Alamo.
No, because it does not meet the regulations.
Linda DeGray.
No, because of the regulations. It's not permitted.
Kenneth Holinsky.
No, because of the regulations.
Vincent Gorillo.
No, regulations.
Joseph Muley.
No, due to the regulations.
Terrence Lynch.
No, to the regulation.
And John Petronella is against, for the same reasons, not in conformance with the regulations. 07.
Okay, thank you. All right. When you're ready, Mr. Secretary, public hearing 3107.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting of Thursday, October 10th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing number 3107, 1655 King Street, special use permit for two-family conversion under Section 4.30.2. Patrick Kennedy, applicant owner, map 16, lot 33, R33 Zone.
Okay. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Madam Chairman, good evening, and members of the commission. Carl Landelina, 487 Spring Street, Windsor Locks, Connecticut, representing the applicant, Patrick Kennedy, who's here with me, seated to my left. So as stated in the public hearing notice, we are seeking a special permit under Section 4.30.2 of the zoning regulations to convert an existing single-family home into a two-family home. And you have the application in front of you. I'm going to go through in some detail our opinion that we comply with all the standards set forth in that specific regulation. And we're asking for you to give us a special permit to allow the conversion. Now, this property has a somewhat unique history, and I'll just go through it very briefly. Actually, it was located or built in 1957, or thereabouts, in a different location. The property was, I guess, sold, or something, in order to accommodate one of the malls here in Enfield. And as a young lad, I remember going to my uncle's house, whose house was in that same area, and he had to leave Enfield and move to Windsor Locks, because his house was part of the land that eventually became one of those malls. The owner here decided to pick up the building and move it. So they acquired, I think, or maybe had acquired, already had some property on King Street, probably was farm property, I think, that the family owned. And in 1972, '73, they obtained a permit to put some excavation and build a foundation, and move the house to that location. So the house started out as a single-family house in 1973, at that location. There are building permits approving all of that. Somewhere along the way, back, I believe, in the '90s, a Bond built garage. And I don't, do they still, are they still in business? Bond built. But back in the day, I remember that name. They used to, one of the things I did was to build garages. I'm sure Mr. Petronella remembers that name, perhaps. Anyway, there was a permit to build a garage to the rear of the home that was there. And a 22-by-22 garage was constructed. In 1995, there was a permit, a building permit obtained, to turn the garage into living space. And also to add in addition, so to speak, to join the single-family home to that garage space, which was then turned into living space. I think there, the garage accommodated two bedrooms and a bathroom. The building permits that were issued at that time included an electrical permit to separate the existing electrical into two meters for two units. And another heating system was installed to accommodate two separate units. So each had their own electrical meter and their own heating unit. And in, I think, the report that you were given by Ms. Driver, the, for whatever reason, even though inspections were done, and completed by, I think, Mr. Stoddard, who at the time was the building inspector, and actually, in the 1992 building permit, there's a note where Mr. Bickley, who was the zoning enforcement officer, indicated that the conversion complied with the zoning regulations. And he says in that permit, "See zoning approval attached." It's not attached to the building permit. I could find no record of it. But in any event, it would appear that the work was completed, perhaps a CO was never obtained. That's the best information I can gather at this point. Now, from a building permit perspective, once a building has been completed, and it's been there for more than six years, the municipality cannot force someone to get a CO unless there's a danger to health or safety. I will tell you that the building inspector just recently has been in the property and indicated no problems with the construction that was done in 1992, which is well before my client obtained title to the property, indicated the only question he had is whether the separation wall was fire-rated under the fire protection code. And we've established, I think, to his satisfaction. It's not a fire code issue, believe it or not, because it's only a two-family. It's just a building code issue. I guess once you get past two units, it becomes a fire code issue. But the building inspector does enforce, under the building code, the fire standards. So the building official has been satisfied that the fire rating for the walls, we separate the two units, or meet the building code, i.e. the fire protection code. So my client bought it in '17.
Yes.
And at that time, it was marketed as a two-family. The zoning, or the assessor's card indicates that it has for some time been assessed as a one-family with an in-law apartment. And my client went to sell the property and marketed it the way he bought it, as a two-family. And the potential buyer went to the zoning enforcement officer and said, "Is there any issues with this?" And we discovered the problem 30 years later. So I talked to my client and said, "Well, we've got two options. He's issued a ruling that says you don't have a legal two-family. We can go to the ZBA and appeal the issuance of that ruling, and say, "Mr. Rochelli is wrong," especially given that in 1992, the zoning enforcement officer at the time indicated on the permit that it met zoning regulations. Or there's another section in the zoning code, Section 4.30.2, that would allow the conversion under special permit. So let's just go that route, rather than going to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So that's sort of the history as to how we got here. So that's sort of the history as to how we got here. It appears that this property has had two separate units, whether you call them a one-family with an in-law or two separate, two-family house. Looks like it's been going on for about 30 years at this point, unbeknownst to my client. So if you've looked at my narrative, along with the application, what I've attempted to do is take you through the provisions of 4.30.2 and to show compliance with those regulations. Now, when we applied, normally, I come in here with a sort of surveyor or an engineer, and I've got architectural plans. So we don't have those. I asked staff if we needed to do those. And she said, "For an application of this nature, just work off the information on the assessor's card, as well as the GIS map." So that's what I've provided to you. And so relying on the information that we have provided, I've taken you through the regulations. So if you look at the use table, which is part of my narrative, table 4.20, it provides that, let's see, I guess, you know, this alphabetical, so if you look down in the Cs, the last C, it says, "Conversion of Buildings for Residential Use." And that's underlined, which means it's a specific section in the zoning regulations. It is approved or permitted in the R33 by special permit. So you have before you a special permit. I also, when I look at these tables, I also go to see if there's any footnotes, because a lot of the dirt is in the details, so to speak. And there are no footnotes that would apply. So it's a special permit application. Then I've attempted to take you through the requirements under 4.30.2. It says, A, existing buildings may be converted from one-family residential or from other-use buildings, i.e., I suppose you could convert a residential, a commercial or industrial building. You're allowed to do that. We have a one-family residential building, technically, I suppose, to a two, three, or four-family building with a minimum building size of 1,600 square feet of floor area after their conversion. So we meet that criteria. This floor area is about 1,735. The gross ground floor area on the lot does not exceed 25% lot coverage. And I believe I've done the math. We've got 1,700 square feet on a lot of about 30,000 square feet. So clearly, we are well below the 25% coverage requirement. C, each dwelling unit shall contain a minimum of 600 square feet after the conversion, provided, however, that the conversion shall result in no more than one additional unit per lot, nor more than two bedrooms in each additional dwelling unit. We do meet those requirements. Each of these are two-bedroom units. So we're going from, technically, one to two, so we meet that. And D standard is the conversion shall have a minimal impact on traffic in the neighborhood. The commission shall make a finding that, A, two parking spaces per dwelling unit have been provided. There's a circular driveway here, and a very large driveway is shown on the GIS map. And if you look at the GIS, it clearly shows that part of the driveway is located on the budding property. So I included in that a copy of the deed, which says that this property was sold to my client together with a driveway easement to use that driveway, which is located partially on the budding property. You also have in your packet that driveway easement itself, which came from the Longies, I'm sorry, Long Lee family at 1655, I'm sorry, from the Clarks at 1657 to the owner, Long Lee. And that driveway easement is about nine years old at this point. Must have been discovered some way along the line that part of that driveway encroached onto the Clark property. And the Clarks then thereafter, I guess, provided, or somebody provided an easement for that fact. The next requirement is that, again, the two parking spaces, all state and town codes and regulations have been met in undertaking the conversion. We're not aware of any codes that we haven't met. Three, the exterior architectural style and appearance of the building and lot has been maintained, hasn't changed since the garage was put up in addition to connect the two in 1992. And the square footage of the dwelling unit to be added should not exceed 75%. So we meet that requirement as indicated. There are no exterior stairwells on the property. Everything is interior. The additional cellar space has been provided. And we meet, under the cellar regulations, we meet those requirements. There is access, two separate ways, means of access for each of the units to get into the cellar area. And the cellar space has been divided essentially in two, so that each of the occupants in, now, at the present time, there's only one occupant in one of the units. The other one is vacant. I assume that the new owner will probably either occupy one of the units for themselves, if you give his approval and rent out the other, or perhaps rent both of the units out. And G does not apply. This is not a conversion of an industrial or mill building. And H says that we can only do this once, that so no one can come back and try to get this duplex, this two-family converted into a three-family at some later time. So I believe we meet all of the standards of your requirements in the regulations. As indicated, we are in the overlay zone. There is no new construction proposed here. And I think staff has done a good job of providing that information to you in her report about our compliance with the overlay zone. As I say, this has been used essentially as a two-unit property for 30 years. And if there was some, I guess, use of, or some, some things that have gone on that have, let's say, had an impact on traffic in the neighborhood, which is under D, that we would have heard about it before now. I'm not aware of any complaints with anyone. There's a four-family right next door. There's a two-family on the other side. Across the street, I believe, is a fairly large industrial building that has multiple tenants. So I don't think the three or four cars that are, have been parked or are going to be parked here in the future would have an adverse impact on traffic. Now, I guess, one of the elephants in the room, so to speak, is the mention in the staff report about compliance with section 4.30.3. That is an entirely separate use under your use table. It's an entirely different section of your regulations. We didn't apply under that section. We have a choice of applying under 4.30.2 or 4.30.3. If we apply under one section, we're required to meet the standards in that section. If we're not applying under 40.4.30.3, I don't see why we'd be held to a standard that we're not using. It'd be the same as if there were two sections allowing elderly housing, something we've talked about in the past. And you do have multiple sections. If I met the standard for elderly housing but didn't meet the standard for senior housing, I would say to you, "I'm only applying for the elderly housing under this section, not the senior housing under another section." Now, as an accommodation, I guess, to staff, I did go through 40.4.30.3. It's tough to say all those numbers. And one of the standards we clearly meet in that we have to have, at least two of our neighbors have to have multifamily houses, and they do. I got to tell you, I tried to read and comprehend the second section about calculating the density within 500 feet. I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but I couldn't even get through understanding the regulation, never mind how to apply it. I did try to do it, and staff was able to show me a calculation that somebody had gone through, they had like... Yeah, I got to tell you, figuring out the formula for the quadratic equation was easier, had fewer steps, than figuring out how to do it. And I said, "I can't calculate." I got as far as I could, but I couldn't determine what the area of non-residential buildings were or what the area of vacant lots were. And I got, I got stumped. And I got, I said, "I'm done here." So either I'm going to convince them that I don't need to do that calculation, because it was going to blow my head off, or if they insist that they need this, which I honestly think you don't, and I implore you that you don't, because it has nothing to do with this application, I'm going to hire a mathematician or an engineer or somebody to do that for you. And I don't, I can't tell you whether we comply or not. It's too complicated for me to tell you. I will tell you, within 500 feet, we do bring in King Court, which are single-family houses on very small lots. So I don't know how that would impact it. But in our relative area, not within 500 feet, but our near area, you know, we've got, you know, eight or nine units on three lots already existing out there in industrial uses across the street. So I think we comply. This would fix a longstanding problem, a 30-year-old problem. And, you know, my client moved out. He lived here when he bought the house, and he's moved out. He just wants to sell it and go to different environments. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay.
Anyone has?
Staff, would you like to, before we ask our questions?
Just before Georgie does, we've been, we've been wrestling with these two sections since we've read these regulations for the first time, because they're completely, they're completely contradictory. The duplex residence, a duplex is a two-family. So if this says duplex, and then we have two-family, we don't define either of them. To me, they're the same thing. So we've really wrestled with this in our own minds, because, but our job is to tell you what's in our regulations. And they both do apply. I agree that it makes no sense. And I think Georgie had the same experience.
Well, Carl's not kidding with the mathematical breakdown.
Yeah, he's not.
Because I sent him the breakdown Mr. Matt Davis did for 78 Park, which is about a giant paragraph and a half of just math. So I told him not to worry about it for now and just be prepared. In that case, just some quick history, just to clarify a few confusing items. August 14th, a zoning compliance letter was requested. The zoning officer wrote the letter, did an investigation of existing records, and found that the assessor's card listed the property as a single-family property with an in-law apartment. The in-law apartment was unapproved. A special permit was issued in October 7th, 2004, for the addition of a second residential unit. So that was the garage on the property that was converted into a unit. That approval was never filed on the land records, and that made the approval void. A building permit was not submitted for the conversion of the attached garage into two bedrooms, however. Neither was a final inspection nor a certificate of occupancy. Let's see. The abutting uses do seem to help the applicant satisfy that density requirement. One abutting use is a four-family, the other is a two-family. This is where these two sections kind of collide of each other. Yes, he needs the approval for the conversion of the garage, but also, upon completion of that conversion, it becomes a duplex. There's a separate entrance to access the unit. From my understanding of conversation with the zoning officer, that's what would qualify that section for the duplex. Fortunately, both are allowed by special permit approval in the R33 zone. And the only site-specific condition I had came from the building official. About a one-hour firewall separation is required between units. And that's all I have for now.
Okay. Questions? Anyone? Christian? You're good? Go for it.
Well, if you're asking, I have, I have just, it's just a comment through the chair to staff, is that I'm glad this came up, because it's a, it's a, it's an awful regulation. And I, I, I hope that we take this as a learning opportunity to see that this regulation needs to be improved. And I think we have a lot of discussion going forward. We really ought to be making it easier, I think, for landowners as such to have duplexes. But this one, this, for what it's worth, for how onerous our regulations are, I'm genuinely impressed that it works. So good, good job, and I guess luck.
I was extremely happy to find out it did too.
Yeah, yeah, I'm very impressed, because I've read these regulations a while ago, and I'm like, how does this? I'll be honest, these regulations very much appear written to prevent duplexes. But that's how they appear to me. And I think we have a responsibility as our agency to correct that deficiency. So again, I'm impressed. Looks good to me.
John?
I have no questions.
Ken?
No, I'm also.
Joe?
If I could just inject, interject one more thing or inject it into the conversation. So when I read regulations like these, and I, because, you know, you know, I spent most of my working day doing this, I always in my head try to reconcile them, right? Because whoever put them in there had a reason for doing it, even though they probably was done, who knows when. And I thought, well, maybe the first section is if you have an existing building and you want to turn it from a one to a two or an industrial. And the other one's for if you want to build a new one. Because it certainly would suit that. But then it uses the word conversion in it too. So I said, "Meh." So, because I, you know, I always try to defend the regulations and say, "They have to work together."
So how did you decide which one to go after? You just flip a coin?
We, I don't, I didn't even read the third one. I just, I just said, "Well, this will work. It's a conversion. We got a house, we're going to convert it." And if I had found out it didn't work, I would have went to the other one. So I picked the one eventually that we could comply with.
Chair, this is already on our list to modify.
Yes. Well, there are a couple of comments here that I feel it need to be addressed. The applicant, application is missing a floor plan of the internal. I think that's really important to have that.
Did I not provide that?
No. You just gave us this dividing line. It's like, I don't know what that means. So, yeah, you gave me a picture.
Yeah.
Right, with, and a dividing line, and I don't know what that means.
I have a hand-drawn one, if you'd like that.
You can give that to staff.
Yes.
And then the one-hour separation, you mentioned that the fire, the building department had been out?
Yes.
And the comments here, it says, they had, they've been there, and...
The folks that...
And identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Patrick Kennedy, 1655 King Street. The inspector came out for the people purchasing the home, and I know that's something that they looked at, and they approved.
Now, is that a our building inspector or the inspector that they hired to do that?
I think it was probably their inspector.
Yeah, there's a difference, so. It's a huge difference.
Okay.
So, yeah. So our building inspector, has he gone out and...
I do not know. We don't really, they just had that comment. I don't know if they go out or not. That's not something that we would typically know of unless it's specifically asked.
Well, I think that, and only because, as a property manager, and we did have a huge fire, and it was a firewall that protected a lot of people. So that, to me, is huge. And if you've ever seen a huge fire, it's terrifying, so. Okay, and then the fire department, same thing. So, and the other concerns that I have is because there's no records of inspections, and it's not your fault. I'm not saying it is. But there seems to be a lot of building going on to this piece of property with plumbing and electrical work. We don't, I hate to say it, but the people who owned it before could have been just, "Hey, I can build that." It's like I watch a YouTube video. I fixed my own dryer, watched YouTube. I can build that. And if you really don't know what you're doing, you could be making mistakes. So I worry about that. So other than that, that's my comments.
Actually, if I could comment on that.
Sure.
Commissioner, there were inspections done pursuant to the '92 permit. The plumbing was inspected and signed off. The electrical was signed off. The heating was signed off. was signed off, and the framing was signed off on those kinds of things. What didn't happen was the final inspection in the issuance of the CO.
Okay, because we don't have any of that information here, so...
The '92 permit materials. I'll provide that.
And I guess my question is, is this whole build-out was done in '92? Because it says there was an application in 2004 for a in-law apartment to get that. So I guess I'm confused.
1991 was a special permit for a two-family.
Okay.
I just have a note about it. I don't have any further information on it.
Okay.
It was, I mean, we switched online permitting vendors, we lost access to most of our historical files within View Permit, so those old files in View Permit were migrated into Open Gov. A lot of the historical records, though they are closed physically, because they're migrated records, they're not closed digitally. So they're just left open to update, and whenever they get pulled up, we try to update them, but there's a lot. When you look at the records for this parcel, just like what Mr. Landelina said, the final inspection for the CO was never done. But I unfortunately don't have any information about the 1991 approval.
Okay, because I did stop in the office the other day, and Rick gave me his letter of compliance, and that 2004 request was for a second floor, not for a, so I'm confused.
Oh, that's not what...
Yeah, there was an application to add a second floor onto that, and there's some drawings from around that period, that was never done.
Yeah.
Obviously.
I'm confused.
That was the 2004 approval. It was the second-story residential unit in 2004.
All right.
That was the one that didn't have the special permit filed on land records, so that approval was an all-void. In the zoning compliance letter, it does not address the 1991 approval.
Okay. Just, it was very confusing, trying to follow this, so...
Madam Chair, I'm just wondering if this is really more of a building permit issue to make sure that it is finalized, especially the firewall.
Yeah.
So we're just approving the separation.
Okay. Go ahead, Vinnie.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to say, couldn't he just get, I mean, he needs a CO, so it needs to be inspected to get a CO.
We don't need a CO.
The issue is the unit itself. The unit itself was never approved. So it was built, it's already built. He's here before you to ask for that approval of the unit, not the CO. It's for the unit.
The COs will be taken care of through the building department moving forward.
Right, okay, I just thought when she said in '91, or whatever, they did the inspections and stuff, but a CO was never permitted. So that's where I came up with...
Yeah.
This is not...
Needs an inspector over there to give him a CO, right?
That was the 2004 approval. It's very confusing.
There's a lot of date, so I apologize.
No, no. Yeah, the reason it doesn't need a CO is because it's been there for more than six years, and under the building code, you don't need a CO if something's been in place for more than six years.
Correct.
It's an odd rule, but that's, yeah.
Okay.
But we'll comply with whatever the building inspector wants us to do. Obviously, we want it to be safe, or, you know...
But that's their part, right? No, that's not us.
My client did a wonderful hand-drawn floor plan, which I can't put my hands on, but we'll provide to staff.
Okay.
If you want to make that a condition of approval.
Please. Yeah, it just shows the permits were pulled. Anybody else have any questions?
So Carl, was the, excuse me, was the assessor's card in here? I didn't see the assessor's.
Yeah, it's attached. I believe it was.
Anybody have the assessor's card?
Yeah, I mean, it's the one...
No, it's the one that has the square, and it's got a line through it, and it says dividing line. That's...
Oh, this thing?
Yeah.
Well, they have it listed, yeah.
That's it, yeah.
The assessor has it listed as an in-law apartment, correct?
Correct. That's, yeah, if I have the card, I can provide it to you.
But it appears that it does meet the safety requirements for two families, seeing that you have the utilities separated. I was wondering, is the water line separated? Is there two water lines?
Yes.
So that's even more so, because the water company is very particular about running two lines in. So, were the comments from fire and building hidden here before they satisfied? I mean, you satisfied it? Because it sounded like you said you spoke to the building inspector.
I was mistaken, I guess. I understood what I was told, that the inspector said it was okay, and I just gleaned from that the building inspector, but now, I guess I...
You're right about fire, because fire does three-family and up, and I think he indicates that here, or somebody does.
Yeah, right.
But I'm a little confused as to whether they were in before this, they came to look at it, the building inspector?
It sounds like maybe they haven't.
Because when this is written, it could be, you know, time goes, why...
Sir, I've never built on the property, or made any edits to it.
No, for this application, I see comments.
Oh, no, we have not had the town building inspector out, so the buyers had an FHA alone inspector come out.
My mistake, I apologize. So here's, do you want to see the assessor's card?
No, but it says...
Yeah, I'll hand this in too.
It says in-law.
Single-family with in-law.
Right.
Now, it doesn't meet the definition or the provisions for an in-law apartment in your regs, because that requires that there be a familiar relationship between the...
Right, right. And you have to sign up every year?
Yeah, exactly. So I...
So to me, it seems like it's, you know, having the separate utilities is a big deal for weighing the two-family part of this. And the separation wall, you said you satisfied the separation wall?
No, apparently we have not, I'm sorry. So we, I guess the building department's comments about that are still open, and we will satisfy them as a condition of approval, I would ask.
It is correct that the fire marshal doesn't do two-family, it's three and over.
Right.
And he says that in here.
Yes, he does, yeah.
Okay.
Right.
So we can just make that a condition, and...
Right, that'll be the building department's, yeah, and then the floor plan, and then whatever else. I know there was also another site-specific, I think.
For me, the...
Yeah.
Well, anyways, I crossed out some of the general conditions in my memo, because they just don't really apply for this situation. One being bonds, the GIS submission, which is a weird condition, landscaping bond, pre-com meeting, because the thing's already built, complete-as-built, as-built foundation, and the architectural drawings. So with that being said, typically, our post-approval process includes, you know, final plan review and everything, certificate of zoning compliance, once they go through the building department process. The building permits, they require plans for the review, and then zoning gets tagged in for review, we get tagged in for the rest of the reviews, and then a permit is issued, it goes through inspections and construction, and then at the end, COs are issued. So Mr. Landelina is saying that there is a building code that I'm not familiar with, I'm a planner, but there's a building code about a six-year rule where a CO would then not be needed. So condition 24 is a little challenging with the zoning officer, because when he does his zoning certificate of occupancy, those need to be certified by whoever built the structure. Typically, an engineer signs it, or a land surveyor. Very rarely, a contractor will sign off, but just somebody to attest to the fact that the unit was built in accordance with the approved final plans. And that's before we issue the bond releases and whatnot. So I struggle with this one, because technically, a CO won't be issued, so it shouldn't really be a condition. But then again, I can't really speak for the zoning officer at this point in time, so I struggle with that condition.
If I may, so, here's a thought. So, it's actually Connecticut General Statute, it's 29-265. And what it says is that after six years, essentially, the building department can't make me get a CO unless they find health or safety issues. So when the building official goes in, if he believes that there are health or safety issues, he will make us get a CO and comply with the building code. If he doesn't believe there are, then he won't be able to ask us for a CO. So that'll be his call. So if you want to make a specific provision that will satisfy not only the building official with respect to the fire rating, but, you know, whether he believes a CO needs to be issued or not, if that's satisfactory to you. And sometimes, again, what happens, I've done many of these, you know, you get an electrician to come out and say, "I walked around, and I plugged stuff in, and it seems to be, I looked at the panel, and, you know, I turned on the water, and whatever," and they say, "Yeah, everything," otherwise, you start opening walls. You know, which is...
If I could just continue on my thought with the assessor's card?
Sure.
So we're going to go from a in-law apartment, which is under 3107 Enfield Street, right? No, I'm sorry, 1655 King Street.
Right.
So, not to make another complicated, but do we have to give a new address number to that second unit, 1655A?
Do they have...
I mean, what do you...
They already are, aren't they? On the mailboxes.
There is, yeah. There's two mailboxes, yeah.
Because right now, it's just keyed as one address.
Right.
Because it is one, it's an in-law apartment, but now it's going to be, you have the separate utilities.
Right.
So it's another, some mailbox, it doesn't...
There is, sir, yes, there's two mailboxes that say A and B.
A and Bs are, good, so that's a problem. So, but that said, it's got to be a two-family house then, if it's got two mailboxes.
Well, the federal government says it is, so...
It's got two meters.
And then the assessment will go along.
Okay, what are we doing here?
Okay, so on 24, condition 24, no certificate of occupancy or other final approval may be issued until the CEO has signed off. Because it hasn't been inspected by our building department, and I'm sure it's fine, and it will, I don't know how to do that. Any suggestions?
Laurie and I were having a discussion instead, because condition 25 says final project review and certificate of zoning compliance. Since there aren't exactly floor plans to really go by, we were thinking maybe just final project review.
That could, that would work, for a final project review, and a certificate of compliance, and one of the site conditions would be, specific, would be a, the building inspector go out, and to have a floor plan. Doesn't have to be hand-drawn.
A signed and sealed floor plan?
At this point, I, do we have to have it signed and sealed? No. People have, it's a 30-year-old project that's been, and if we could be supplied with dimensions on it, you know, like, this is the bedroom, what the bedroom size is, and it doesn't have to be a signed and sealed one.
So if that's the case, then you may want to waive the requirement of the site plan.
That would typically require a separate vote?
Yes, it would be a separate motion, motion to do a waiver of the site plan.
I'm open to suggestions here, gentlemen. Do we want to waive the site plan? I mean...
If I may, given the circumstances, I'm, you know, in agreement with waiving that requirement, and as far as the floor plan, as far, we could just make a condition that if the applicant supplies, went to staff as a condition of approval, I don't have any problem with that. You know, I understand the history, and it is what it is. You know, I just don't want to make a precedent of, you know, waiving these requirements. I know our plans are very specific, or our regulations are very specific with regard to submitting plans, A2 surveys, building elevation plans, floor plans, and we've been a little bit laxed on that, but I'd like to see, you know, us not get so lax. This, I think, is certainly, you know, is one of the conditions, you know, certainly agreeable to waive that requirement on that. As last week, I think we did the same thing, a similar, waived the condition as well, so no issue there. And then, as far as getting the building official, are we talking about getting a building official out there to do a, like, a site inspection?
Yes, just a site inspection.
So basically, you can make a condition where it'll be subject to review by, inspection by the building department for building code acceptance?
Right.
Is that...
That would be fine.
Basically, is that...
I'm not sure if we could make that as a condition. You're conditioning a different department to go out and do work that they may or may not have to do. We could certainly make that a strong recommendation. I'm not sure if we could make it a condition, though.
How about a separate, independent, third-party inspector to do so? Which is...
Which it sounds like they've already done.
Yeah.
And then if they get something, you know, submitted to the...
If you think of it this way, the building department comment requires a fire, a one-hour firewall, so that will have to be inspected anyways.
Right.
So it's kind of like an already built-in inspection, according to the conditions.
And if I know the building department, if, when he's in there, he's going to do a little glance over anyway. If he sees anything else that jets out, he'll certainly make note of it.
Yeah.
So...
They're going to, as Georgie said, they're going to go out there for that inspection regardless, so I just...
Then we don't have to make that as a condition.
And it's already a site-specific condition, so, good.
Right, so I would remove the condition.
We can provide you with a copy of the independent, third-party inspection report, if you'd like that for your file.
That would be great.
Absolutely. If I was representing you, I'd ask you, I'd recommend that you do that, just a UIA.
Right, well, only because it's just such a difficult situation, and it's very, it's convoluted.
Yes.
I mean, this is a very convoluted thing that we have here in front of us, so...
I only do convoluted, you know.
I know, you do. That's why I like seeing you. You always bring us convoluted, so. Okay, anything else?
Just remove condition 24, and then keep 25, and delete the part of 25 that says "not less than 10 days before a certificate of occupancy," and that's it. Then waive the site plan.
Okay.
Did you say you were going to delete 24, Georgie?
Yeah, remove 24, reword 25 by striking out the part "not less than 10 days before a certificate of occupancy." That way, it'll make it easier for post-approval process for us. Then you have your one, two site specifics of the firewall, second being the inspection report from the third party that Mr. Landelina mentioned.
I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Show movement. Second.
All in favor? Ms. Secretary, when you're ready. Is there any, any conversation, questions?
Laurie, are you making any...
Oh, there's nobody here.
You still have to do it three times.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You're new.
There's nobody here.
I know, but I still do, I still talk the air out.
You should just state that, for the record, that there's nobody in the audience.
At this time, the reason we have no public participation is there's no one in the audience. So, any conversation or discussion on this? Okay. Ms. Secretary.
Yes. Laurie, were you making up any of these comments or edits, or you want me to? You didn't, you didn't, I'm sorry.
So you still need to vote on the waiver for the site plan?
Okay.
Don't forget that, please. Don't forget that, please.
It'll be the site plan only?
Yeah.
The waiver?
So you have two motions, these are site specifics, and I cross out the ones on the back.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive the requirement to provide a site plan regarding public hearing number 3107, 1655 King Street, special use permit for a two-family conversion under section 4.30.2, Patrick Kennedy, applicant, owner, MAP 16, Lot 33, R33 Zone.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Frank Alimo.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Ken Helinski.
Four.
Vidi Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronola is four. Okay. Now, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3107, 1655 King Street, special use permit for a two-family conversion under section 4.30.2, Patrick Kennedy, applicant, owner, MAP 16, Lot 33, R33 Zone, with the conditions listed and, and some added conditions, a site-specific condition would be a, the applicant will supply a independent, third-party inspection report to the, to the planning office. And with respect to condition number, it'd be number 24 listed, that would be deleted. And condition number 25 would be reworded and read as follows. A request for final project review and certificate of zoning compliance must be made to the planning department or other final approval is requested from the building official. So the words "not less than 10 days before certificate of occupancy" would be deleted.
Mr. Petronola, I'm sorry if I missed this, but did you read the one-hour firewall separation requirement as a site?
That, that's already a site-specific condition, isn't it?
Yes, that's a number.
Number one?
Did you state it, though? Okay.
Well, it's, it's, it is a site-specific condition already listed, so.
You're supposed to read them into the record, but it's okay. We'll move on.
Oh, this.
All of them?
Just never mind, never mind.
No, we never read all of them.
Good. Okay, all right.
Okay. All right, roll call.
So a motion was made.
Second, I second it.
It's a second by Commissioner Hulinski.
Okay, roll call.
Okay. Frank Alimo.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Kenneth Helinski.
Four.
Vidi Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronola is four.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Petronola.
We'll change that regulation.
Eventually. I'm going to take a five-minute recess.
So we'll, this here is. Georgie's. Georgie, Georgie, 3107, 3107.
Let's move on to our agenda. Number, Director of Planning report.
So first off, let's look at the calendar. So this is a calendar of possible workshops that we could have as a team, as the whole commission with our consultants and staff. We have a couple of things to talk about. The yellow are the dates that we know that Don Pollan can be available. The 24th, we're going to hear, the work on the agenda already is going to be us reviewing chapters one through three of his own regulations.
At a regular, at a regular meeting?
At a regu, yeah.
Sorry.
All right, help me out.
At a regular meeting?
Is Mr. Pollan going to be here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so on the 23rd.
And we're not having a workshop on the first three chapters?
Yes. And then what we were thinking of doing is like every two or three weeks after that, we would have another workshop with the next set of chapters.
I don't feel comfortable not having a workshop on the first three chapters because there's definitions that need to be.
We're having a workshop on, during the PCC meeting.
Oh, okay. But a workshop involves people from outside of this commission?
No, 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 no. We, we all decided that we were not going to.
And?
So, so you could, you're going to have conversations regarding the regulations. The public may be here, but until you have a draft for them to review?
I understand that, but in the past, our workshops were other commissioners from other land use would come and listen, and then, because it was more of a free flow between us, and then if they had comments, they would be allowed to give them in the past. So that's why I'm kind of.
Well, like with the P O C D, we did not have the public comment.
No, they wouldn't, they aren't, they, they're just, a workshop was more of a free flow, and then after we would discuss it, the people, it wasn't definite, it wasn't like a public hearing where we'd have to sit there. It was more bouncing ideas, hey, you know what, in wetlands, this is an issue for us or in whatever, and it, it worked really well when we did them for the Thompsonville. It really.
Okay, this is the first I'm hearing of this.
So, all right.
So you're, you're a new chair, so.
Yeah, no, I'm, so.
We talked about just having just commission conversations, the public is welcome, but not welcome to have the conversation with us until there's such times we have public hearings and then, or maybe even before we have public hearings, then we can, you know, have like all of the regulations. It's just that it's going to take a lot of time for us to piece all of the little sections together and wordsmith them. So actually, when I was going to, I started talking, speaking to former Chairman Alimo, we were thinking that it might be nice to have the, these workshops, as well as have a subcommittee that could just work directly with staff, like maybe almost on a weekly or bi-weekly basis for some of the, excuse me, some of the stuff, items that really we need to kind of get into the weeds and just wordsmith. And that's what this next sheet is about, is talking about some, some of the items. So, I mean.
I don't feel that, I, I understand not all commissioners are going to make these workshops, these additional workshops. So whoever can make the additional workshops are more than welcome, because it, it is the whole commission's regulations.
Oh, but, yes.
And I don't want to do subcommittees. It's the whole board or whoever can attend on these.
I mean, the, the whole board would have to make a decision on.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
But I would like them, I want it open to them.
So you just want full commission workshops?
Participation for the ones that can show up on these alternate dates, great.
Well, and also, yeah, okay.
And if they can't, it's, I don't want them to feel pressured. I mean, people have lives, people, you know, have other.
Okay.
Work. They have work. But, you know, like other meetings, so if they can make it, great. If not, yes, go ahead, Walter.
So could we just make the 24th a workshop meeting instead? Is there anything on the agenda that?
There's.
Already part of our meetings that gets handed out the first of the year.
Didn't know, that was a question.
I have a question.
Yes.
Will the meetings be televised?
The workshops don't necessarily have to be televised.
Not necessarily, it depends on where we're at.
Might be helpful if you miss one.
Okay, so.
Be able to watch it as an alternate.
It would be optimal if they could be televised, if they're in the evening and there's other meetings, and most of the time there will be, E.T.V. will be busy doing the other meetings. So, I mean, unless we film it as a Zoom and then play it back after or something like that.
In case you miss one, you could at least watch that and say.
I don't know if we can do any of that.
Comments or something.
And the public, the public can check them out.
I mean, I just checked my dates and I'm, I'm okay with those, but you never know.
And I'm not saying that we're, we're going to have, that we need all of these, and I didn't want you to answer tonight, I wanted to take this home, see if you, if you could make any of these yellow highlighted dates and then get back to me as soon as possible, and then we'll actually schedule the rooms. So, and so, so then staff will have to do a lot of the yeoman's work on, on the, getting down into the weeds of the smaller sections. Obviously, I think the workshops are going to be, you know, going over the chapters, but also kind of, there's going to be certain sections that we're going to need to really focus on.
What would these meetings be, the ones that you?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Potentially put, what time would the meetings be if we were to say, yeah, I can make these dates?
In the evening, or just kind of?
As of now, it's an evening, probably around this, well, not this time, but.
You know, it would be up to the commission as to, you, you want to start it at five? Do you want to start it at six or seven or whatever, so?
Because that might determine me on, on some of it, anything before five is not going to happen.
Well, I don't, I, I think they would be evenings. I think they'd have to be evening.
Okay.
We've noticed that. We've noticed that during the meetings.
Frank?
Is it possible to put out an email with these highlighted dates that you've picked? Because you were wondering, you want us to get back to you?
Yeah.
Then we could all like respond on one email chain? Could we, we could make them or not?
Sure. No, I, yeah, that, that's perfect.
Whatever the highlighted in yellow, is that okay?
Yep. So, okay. So then, oh, go ahead.
A question regarding what Mr. Poll, Mr. Pollan is doing right now. Now, we're, he's going to come in and see us on the 29th right now, did you say?
Twenty-fourth, at our next meeting.
Okay, what's?
To discuss chapters one through three.
All right, does he already have an edited version of chapters one through three?
Pretty much, yes. So that's what, that's the goal, is to have everything as edited as possible, and then obviously, comments from the commission may cause further edits.
So, so we'll be looking at this for the first time on the 24th. I mean, that's a lot of information for us to digest, to, to be able to provide comments with. I, I would like to get the information, digest it.
Yeah, of course.
Have a workshop and then have them come in. I, I, that's, that's me, you know?
Of course, I, I agree.
We're talking about changing the zoning regulations, and I've got a lot of comments and, you know, my, my whole book right now is all marked up and, you know, I think, I think we need an open discussion to talk about, you know, some of this, or a little bit of time and have an open discussion and talk about it. And I, I, I like Don, I respect him, he does a good job. I was on his, his web thing today, which was, I thought was very good. He does, he does a nice job and, and stuff, but I, I just don't want to feel the, the pressure, you know, to get rushed into this thing, because this, this is important.
It is.
Obviously. Thank you.
And that's why I want as many of us to be part of these workshops.
True.
Whether we make, you know, every one of them or whatever, that's why I don't want subcommittees. So, it's too important, okay.
We have a little conflict in November. We have our annual regional planning agency conference on the 7th and the 8th. So we have a meeting on the 7th, and if we need to come back from the conference for that night, we can, but we were wondering if you would be willing to move the 7th meeting to the 14th. can, but we were wondering if you would be willing to move the 7th meeting to the 14th, but that would put, that would mean that you'd have two Thursdays in a row.
And, and the 12th, and a Wed, and Tuesday.
Well, the 12th and the 19th are still to be determined, but we don't know what's going to be on the agenda at this point, of course, so, right now, there's nothing really, there's nothing, like, in, in the works that we know of, with the exception of, actually, one of the, the, the people that are working on the North River Street project would like to have the Thompsonville regulations updated, have some modifications to it, and they'd like to be heard in November, so that would be something that we would do before.
And I thought our regulations for Thompsonville were pretty darn good, because we even put a marina out there, and mixed use, and-
Well, they, they would like to come in and, and seek some modifications, and they'd like to do that sooner than later, so they can start their design, but, yeah.
Yes, Walter.
So, did we, did November change that we're not on the second Thursday, we're on the first Thursday, I mean?
It did change because of Thanksgiving.
Because of Thanksgiving, yeah.
All right, and I noticed that in December, too?
Yeah, because of Christmas.
Okay, okay, just checking.
Yeah.
So, but, um-
So it's, again, I guess we'll, I'll send this out to you tomorrow, and, and you can think about it and let us know whether or not you would like to move the 7th to the 14th or not. It's, it's our regional conference, it's usually held in October, it's at an unusual time, so we couldn't even have predicted this, so. Okay, so that's sort of it for the calendar part, and we'll get this out to you tomorrow. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, all right, what I also handed out, and I sent you the email yesterday, and sorry, I was, we were trying to get a lot done here, so, these, these sections are just certain things that, you know, meet, this is where I say, getting into the weeds of the, of the wording of things, like, and I started talking to John Petronella, he came in to sign some plans the other day, so, we require cellar and foundation requirements that basically it says, you must, you shall have a cellar, you shall have a basement, and we're wondering, do you want to look at that, and, because if you eliminate the requirement for cellars, it will aid in making housing more affordable, a lot of the cell, a lot of the cellars all have sump pumps because there's high water table, and the question is, is, is there, what is the, what do you believe is truly the reason that we require a basement? So, and again, you don't have to answer right now, but these are the types of things that we're going to need to sit down and, and talk about, like, and there's a lot of these little sections that, that are like this.
I just want to add on to what Lori said, today, we had an inquiry who's building a raised ranch in Enfield. We were probably on the phone with him for probably a good 30 minutes, just going back and forth about that cellar and foundation requirement. He is not the only contractor we have spent hours with-
Yep.
-interpreting this paragraph, this one paragraph. There's a contractor that came into our office six months ago with a project for a raised ranch, and has been in our office at least 10 times with the same questions about the same section. So the way it reads, raised ranches, they're not allowed without a cellar or a basement, but obviously, raised ranches don't have that, so instead, 50% of the habitable space is required to be below grade, which is typically about three feet, and that's one of the issues with this reg.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's very hard to explain and interpret, but the question is, is why is there a requirement for a cellar?
Throw something up, maybe, excuse me, maybe a, a partial basement for utilities and washer, dryer, you know, half of the building have a basement, I don't know, just throwing that out there.
So like, um-
Mechanicals, not across space, no, full basement, and then the rest on, like, half of the house have a full basement, maybe the rest on a slab, just so they can have a mechanical room and some storage.
Alls I can tell you from living, alls I can tell you from living in Tennessee for several years, there is no basements. Everything's on a slab.
Everything up on, uh, Till Street's all slabbed.
Same in Alabama.
No, those all have basement on Till Street. Yes.
Some of them don't.
No, they all have basement.
They're all on slabs, and one of the reasons is because of the cost factor, and that's how they started doing it. They all say it's because, oh, you live close to the Mississippi River and it's high water table, and when I bought a house down there, I said, okay, maybe that can't be the reason, and the guy said, oh, yeah, that's the reason, and I said, good, I got a pool in my backyard that's 15 feet lower because of the yard slopes-
No problem.
It's 15 feet lower than where my walkout is, where my deck is, so, if there was a water problem, how can the pool be sitting in the ground? But that, it's the cost factor that they use it for-
Yeah.
And the easy, I mean, it, it's an easy build.
Isn't, isn't, isn't a full basement considered to be more structurally sound? I would think so.
I'm not a builder, I have no idea.
I'm not a civil engineer, but-
The, the question is, is, is this something that should be a zoning issue? Or is this a building issue?
That, that's a tough one.
I like making- Where are you going to make wine?
You, you still have to have a frost wall foundation, so, you're still going to be building a foundation that's four feet deep, okay, if you're going to do slab, slabs, okay, so that's, so, pour another three and a half feet, now you got a basement, I mean, how much more is it? The, the, builders may want to build slabs and, and, yeah, I'll be able to build it cheaper and sell it cheaper, well, you know, it's just like the E Vs, if, if the government's going to give you a $7,000 credit to buy an E V, the E V manufacturers, all they did was raise their prices by $7,000, so where did the money go? I mean, you're, you're kind of looking at the same thing. Excuse me, in, in, in the market, they're, they're basing sales on square footages, you know, so if you've got a 1,200 square foot house that, that doesn't have a basement, and one that does have a basement, they're probably going to sell for the same price, because that's the way it is, that's the way the market's going to go. People like basements, most of them, I think, because they can store their stuff, you know, and, and why, why pay for livable area, and then you got to have a mechanical room and, and things like that, there, there's a lot of back and forth, you, you can debate it all you want, and it comes down to building requirements, and, and, and is it a zoning requirement, but I, I think if, if, if you're going to do something like that, you have to consider the fact that, well, we're probably going to see a lot more applications in for those self-storage units, too, because people are still going to need a place to store their stuff, and, you know?
But they can have a, a second garage, or a shed.
So, it's-
Go ahead, Vinnie.
You, you can debate it back and forth for, for a day, and, you know, there's-
Commissioner Petron, I 100% agree with you, and he's right, seven-foot basement, well, four-foot, it's only a few feet, I don't think the money's, I think that people like the basements is because you can actually, not only your utilities, but, let's see, my basement, I could fit three bedrooms, another living room, and a kitchen if I wanted to, not that I have that, because it's just a ranch, but it's a whole nother living, I could never live in a house without a basement, just because of the stuff I have, and you can't build garages that big with so much going on, so I would, I don't know if it's necessary to make them put a basement in, I don't think it should be like, oh, like you have to have a basement, but, I don't know.
So, comparing Tennessee, though, that, that, it's the frost thing, there's no, there's no frost down there, so if like Florida and Tennessee and all, there's no frost, that's why they could just slap a slab down and build on it. Here, we have to dig down below the frost line and do foundation, so that's, that's, that's the difference.
And for anybody who's never been on, on a slab house, I mean, you know, try to live in one, and just walk on that concrete floor all day, and, and you know it, you really do.
Yeah.
And there are, there are slab houses-
My family in Florida, my feet hurt.
There are slab houses in, in town, Weymouth Road, I think it was, Weymouth Drive, on, on right-hand side, there's a development there, about probably 40 houses, all of those are slab, are slab houses, and then there's a few others, there's some on Parker Street, and then down off of, I believe, Brainerd Road, there's another small development, I think that they're all slabs, and-
Bell Avenue.
Bell Avenue, that, that's right, and, and for whatever reason, they were, they were allowed and tried back in the 60s, and then I think that was it, that was the end of it, they stopped for whatever reason, whether it was the building department or what, but if you look at the houses, you can tell, they're, they're very short, they're sitting on top of the ground, so the, the siding goes almost down to the ground, so when it snows, that's all building up, more susceptible to rot, and it all depends on how you build it, you know, having them out of the ground a little bit is certainly a big advantage, like, like we have them now with the basement windows and so forth, so, like I say, I, I thought about it a lot, and there's, you know, you, you can go back and forth and debate it, you know, pros and cons all day.
I suppose maybe we could just try to word it so it makes a little bit-
More sense.
Better sense, because it's, it's, the way it's worded is very complicated, so, all right, so, so the reason I'm asking you these things is because as staff, we're going to try to wordsmith and modify a lot of these little sections, and that's why I was, that's where I came up with, you know, maybe the, the subcommittee, but, you know, we don't know whether or not, we, we need to ask you whether or not you want us to investigate some of these things.
Okay, on the food truck, that was a huge, huge issue.
Yeah.
And part of the reason they're only allowed in certain areas in town is because we have so many brick and mortar restaurants, and there was, this took a long time to draft that regulation, I wouldn't want to touch that because it wasn't just, you have too many brick and mortar.
There's, there's a lot of towns that have restaurants that have food trucks that are allowed.
Right, and, but, this went through a public hearing, and it took a long time to draft this, and I think because of how hard and difficult it was, and the pushback we were getting to even have food trucks, I wouldn't touch that for a 10-foot pole.
I agree.
Yeah, that was a real, that was a battle.
Okay. It's just, it's, it's one of those things, that's the thing of the fu, the thing of now and of the future, so, we're bringing these up to have, to get this feedback, that's great.
They can like have food truck festivals at the mall parking lot and stuff like, places like that, right, they do now.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if we want to look at other areas to have like a event, food truck events, not permanent, where, because those are popular.
That's already, that's already in there, right?
We have geographical areas, yeah.
Yeah.
Those are popular.
And then, and then they also are, right, they move on, they, they're not to be parked there 24/7, so, yeah.
I think accessory dwellings, I thi, I think we opted out of those.
So, we-
I don't know why they're there again.
Because when we opted out, we agreed that we would investigate areas of town that we would like to have A D Us, because the public act was requiring you to have it anywhere, basically with minor requirements, it was going-
By our opt-out, we don't have to have them at all, we don't even have to look at it.
No, but by our housing plan, we suggest that we're going to investigate locations that A D Us can be utilized.
That'll be a no vote for me. No A D Us, we went all around and around and around and around.
I, I absolutely think we need to, to consider revising our regulations for this. Our, our regulations are, are just the bare minimum of what state statute requires, which, which is kind of crazy and requires like blood relation, and, and like, it, it's, it's, overly restrictive, and, and, you know, there's a lot of benefits to consider for lots of different types of people, and I think it's, I think it's worth hearing from staff, staff and, and Don Poland what they have to say, and having a discussion about it, we don't have to do it right now, but I think it's worth a discussion.
If we, wouldn't we have to vote to go back, since, since we've legally opted out of the state A D Us?
No, 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 we, we, we do not have to have the A D Us as they proposed it-
Right.
For, to create more affordable housing in the community, and based on what we agreed to in our housing plan, thinking about proposing these things. We don't, you don't have to permit them everywhere, but maybe there's certain areas that they'd be perfect, you know, maybe two acres house that has a little garage on the side.
We get a lot of inquiries about like granny pods for residents who have elderly parents and can't afford assisted living or senior living, they want to have them on their property, but the, they're, from what the inquiries have shown, the parents haven't been in a place where they need assistance, they're still independently living, they just want to be close to family for health and emergencies, doctor appointments, so that was one of the things why we were considering A D Us, because of all the inquiries we've gotten.
So you're saying it appears in our plan of development?
Affordable housing plan, too.
Well, the affordable housing plan is in-
Appears there, that's the guide.
Yeah.
Appears in our guide.
Right.
What, what you just described, George, I mean, it was an in-law apartment modified, not, not an accessory dwelling unit.
Don't get it confused with the in-law, though, the in-law is attached to the primary residence, the A D Us are separate.
As I said, modified, modified, it's an in-law apartment modified, those are the inquiries you're getting, people that want to do it because of, 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 of a family member or elderly parents and so forth, that's, that constitutes in-law type of use, yes, modified from what our regulations say, that's different than an accessory dwelling unit.
Well, that's true.
That's right.
But the in-law apartments have a minimum size requirement, and they have to be attached to the home, some properties in Enfield can't accommodate additions like that, some property, a lot of properties actually are below the 17,000 square feet minimum.
Then how would they accommodate an A D U, a separate building that has to have separate water and sewer and-
Maybe they don't, maybe we don't let them have that.
That's just something to explore, because like-
We want to know, you want us to look at it or not?
Would you be, would you think of moving far enough away from the state statute where you can't rent out an A D U? Can't rent it out.
Well, that's a condition you could explore, a regulation.
Because now you're going to turn single-family residential areas into multifamily housing areas.
Yeah, and that's-
Or Airbnb's.
Well, that was, that was the other thing, that the Airbnb's-
We had an extensive debate about this already, I thought we were all, all on board, but it was a previous commission, yeah.
So I don't know if you've, if any of you have used Airbnb's before.
Yep.
If you have happened to look at the Airbnb's in, in Enfield, there are hundreds of Airbnb's in Enfield, a lot of them are by like the more scenic areas, lakes, et cetera. Our regulations don't allow Airbnb's, so that was also something we were talking about with A D Us and how we would want to maybe be specific about how A D Us are separate from Airbnb's, beds and breakfasts and so forth, so like A D-
You say we don't allow A B, Airbnb's?
No, we do not, we have not, not-
You're saying we have a bunch of them?
We do, we don't allow them, there's hundreds of them.
So we got more violations out there than-
But yet, we haven't had any complaints.
These are just some of the issues that we've seen-
Yeah.
With experience working with residents, out-of-town residents, we have, we keep track of all the inquiries that come in, we have binders full of inquiries that address all different sections of the regulations, the ones on Lori's list are the ones that get brought up the most, these are the most popular ones that we deal with, for the most part, besides chickens and roosters.
I think we even had people come in, probably when we did it last time.
I don't think people understand, if they're going to put an A D U on their property, they have to connect to all of the, and they're coming, and, and they're talking about, oh, I want my mom and dad to live close to me, and I want to build this little house, I don't think they, they think, because you see these commercials, and now Amazon has these foldable ones, if you, oh, no, I saw them, they're kind of cool, the guy was unfolding it, but, yeah, it was sold for like $12,000, but it still had to go on something, so, you know, it's not, it, people are just seeing this $12,000 house, and I could live in that.
You can still make requirements, it's not like it's just-
They don't understand all of the- But they don't understand all of the extra costs and I don't think people really understand what, what would be involved with these.
The purpose of my question is, would you like staff to investigate potential regulations that would allow them in town in certain places?
Me? No. Everybody, I'm only one.
I'm two.
I'm a no on that.
I'm a no, too.
Me, too.
I mean
There's a consensus, no.
Okay, just be reminded it's in our housing section.
That's on you, guys.
I mean, I do think
As you look down and we're talking about smaller lots, that's going to take care of our, and I talked about it a lot of times, we're looking at smaller lots, what's going to take care of the
This whole town, they're going to fit with that. That's what's going to happen.
Now, we look at smaller lots, we take care of that component.
I think, I think that there's a lot of spec, there's a lot of speculation here. And I, like, I don't see why it's not worth the discussion. Like, this, this is a serious thing. Like, we're, we're not at the cutting edge at all. We're, we're far behind this with ADUs. Like, these are legitimate ways for homeowners to be able to make use of their property, their private property as they wish.
With a swimming pool.
With, with, with reasonable regulation. Right now, right now, our regulations say you have to be related by blood and you have to come to our planning department every two years to attest that, that you're still alive and your elderly father is still alive. Like, that's absurd. Like
That's for in-law apartments.
These, these, these can go together. So, that's the thing. The in-law apartments that we have are the bare minimum. Like, we can look at our regulations and say, okay, maybe, you know, the idea of in-law apartments is reasonable, but like, we can take away the, the, the blood restriction. We can take away the, you know, coming to staff every two years to attest, again, that you're still related.
Okay.
If you take away the blood restrictions, how's it an in-law?
We have rental.
All right. An in-law apartment can, is to be reintegrated into the house. It is not separated with a whole different utilities.
ADUs don't have to require separate utilities. I, I, I mean, and, and staff can correct me on this if I'm wrong. And there's, there's different types of ADUs. So, and I, and I know there's a lot of overlap because AD, like, ADUs can be in the house, they can, it can be a basement apartment, could be a garage conversion.
Can of worms.
Or it could be a separate
Or, or it can be a separate structure, yeah. And, and a separate structure is, I think, what everybody's getting caught up on. And, and like, yeah, it does seem like there's very little appetite for that. And I think that's the message staff is receiving. But there's other considerations as well. Again, garage conversions, basement apartments, things that wouldn't change a single thing, like, not in addition to the house.
Well, you originally said that we were behind in this area. What, what areas do you feel we're behind in, in ADUs? Like, you're saying, you know, we're kind of behind the times.
Right.
So, so what specific things would we need to look at, in your opinion?
Would we, well, I, I think we need to look at allowing them. I mean, that's like, that's like the base level. And I'm not saying allowing without any regulation.
Yeah, you could require a special use permit.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, if, look, look out there at all, all the, all the states and jurisdictions where, where ADUs are allowed. Look, look AARP, they're, they're huge proponents of ADUs.
Why not?
They have, they have a fifty-page guide on here. If, if you want to implement ADUs, you can just
I'm still a no.
Learn about it.
Well, let me give you an example, let me give you an example. Years ago, my neighbor had his daughter, her husband, and their two kids living in the basement. And it was separate, okay? But, and there's a bathroom down there and all that. But, so would that be considered an ADU now? Would we have to consider that an ADU?
Are, are there full kitchen, excuse me, kitchen facilities and bathroom?
But there was no, you know, they, they used the upstairs kitchen.
Oh, that's just bedrooms.
So they're just living with their family.
You have to have egress windows. You have to have the special kind of emergency windows.
Well, you didn't have that. You just had the cellar window.
You can.
But what happens, you know, we're saying, oh, well, and I'm just going down the line. And, and I'm not going far down the line in twenty years, because there are already articles coming out of a surplus of houses, single-family houses on the market. And so what happens as us baby boomers decide to go to nursing homes or elderly housing or go to the big guy upstairs, what happens then when we have this glut
I thought we had a shortage of houses.
No. There's starting to be a surplus, yes. And so what happens is now you've got this single-family house that is unoccupied, which hopefully some younger person will come along and take, and now you've got two empty houses. So you, you're starting to put a glut of buildings on open space.
And what are you suggesting, that we should artificially restrict the number of homes to
I'm just saying is, is, you know, we're, we're being told, oh, we have to build all these apartments because there's no housing. Well, if you read the article, the surplus of housing that's coming on the market is going to now create opportunities for people who rent to go into the houses. So now you're going to have empty apartments. So you've got to constantly fill them. So if you keep adding more and more and more, you're going to have this, this eventually ghost town of empty houses that are going to be blighted because nobody can take care of them.
I mean, for one
I'm just worried about
For one, I, I think you're, you're, like, more supply of housing is not a bad thing. I think, I think you're kind of alluding to it as a bad thing.
No, I'm just saying is, I'm just saying in twenty years, what happens?
Especially in this state.
I think if you look at the other bullet points below, below this one, you'll see that we're satisfying, I think, some of your concerns.
And I think the, the thing is
The next two items below accessory dwellings, I think, will really bring the first-time home buyer in and the elderly person that wants to downsize. Because right now, we, that's the problem we have in this town. Our own kids can't even afford to live here. And when you get older, you can't afford to downsize.
I mean, I'm suggesting
You get stuck with a house that you can't afford the taxes on.
Well, Chairwoman DeGrady, I think, I think what you're saying is that you, you're assuming that this is a mandate. This is not a mandate.
No, no, I'm not saying it's a mandate.
This is just saying that, hey
We're planning.
Yeah, we're, we're planning.
For the future.
We can plan to allow residents to have a little more flexibility with their homes, have a little more, more control over their own private property, which I feel is something
Can I just say real quick, this is really on my mind. I totally understand where the majority of you are coming from in terms of no. I hear you on that. I understand your complaints from a planning perspective. However, just based on the amount of public residents in this town who have asked for that in terms of helping their elderly parents and then just being told no has been utterly heartbreaking for them. They end up going to social services, complaining about the same thing, and then not being able to afford putting their parents in elderly housing. So I just, I just recommend, for the sake of the Enfield public's benefit, just, it wouldn't hurt to explore it. And then if you find during exploring that you really don't want these and you really don't like them, don't, don't approve them. Just keep them out.
But we allow in-law apartments. So where's the restriction from getting your relatives?
What's the restriction in heartbreak?
I don't
Put an in-law apartment on.
It's not just for in-laws. A lot of these people would like to have some other little unit, so they could help afford to stay in the house that they have.
No.
Okay.
No, it's rental.
Walter?
So this, this, this one we just approved that was built thirty years ago, wasn't that an ADU?
No.
That was a duplex.
Technically, yes.
That, it was actually started
It converted a garage?
Yes, into an ADU. But it was attached.
But that was supposed to be an in-law apartment. And then somehow it got expanded and, you know, through whatever.
It's not even near the same thing we're talking about.
Right. All right, well, we'll, let's, let's move on from ADUs for now.
Just one more thought. And I made this on for observation a long time ago. There seems to be a big push to take the town of Enfield and make it into the city of Enfield.
Yes.
I think that's the underlying thing that's in everybody's head.
I agree.
I like the town. I don't want to become a city. I don't want to become Hartford or Waterbury or anything like that. And I think when we look at these things, we have to keep that in mind. What do we want to be?
Okay. All right, let's move on. So there's been conversation with some developers
of allowing small lot sizes, like five or seven or ten thousand square foot lot sizes with, with smaller houses. Now, this is not an ADU. This is your own house. It's just a small house on a small lot. Is that something that you would think about entertaining to allow in town?
If we go to an R-17 or an R-12, if we decide that when we do the regulations, I don't have a problem with that.
I'm good with it, too.
No, well, this would be smaller.
I'm just saying is
So we have our R-12 and R-17 and that's, that's another section.
I'm just saying is, when we get to that, we can discuss that.
So do we want to go back to fifty-foot lots? Is that what we're talking about?
So we got, she got five thousand, seven thousand, ten thousand.
Then we would have another Thompsonville area.
Five thousand would be a fifty-foot
Well, yeah, is that what we want?
I, I don't, but
I don't either.
Ten thousand would be a hundred by hundred, right?
A lot of younger people would love that.
Ten, ten thousand square feet's a hundred by hundred, right?
Yeah.
Hundred by hundred. So Thompsonville's fifty.
I'm talking about the fifty.
Thompsonville's fifty by hundreds.
Fifty by hundreds.
It would make a lot of existing properties conform.
Yeah, actually it would.
For example, in the R-88 zone, we have this one random subdivision below the Scantic that are twelve thousand square foot lots in R-88 zone.
Okay.
Yep.
And that cancels out a lot of lot coverage opportunities for them.
I, I think that would make, like I was saying before, our children and our elderly would allow them to buy if we can somehow figure out how to fit that into our planning.
And it's not, so the question is, would you entertain it? And if so, we will try to find some regulations that we believe that would fit into the community for you to approve or modify. We don't want to do a lot of research if you don't want it.
Right.
Do we want another congested area in Enfield similar to Thompsonville? And where would we want that? That would be the bigger question.
Thompsonville's multifamily. These would be single.
I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm using that as an example. Let's take away the multifamily. I'm just saying, do we want that kind of area in this town? And how would our town embrace that? And where would we put that? That's another thing. So, I mean, if, and I'm just throwing this out and I'm, I'm not saying it's going to happen, is we're going to do something, hopefully someday, with the mall area. And the presentation that came in to the council was, you know, four hundred and fifty apartments and elderly housing and two hotels and some shopping. And that's a small area. And that's a lot of stuff in that small area. So that's a lot of congestion and a lot of people living close together. It's kind of developing it into a small city. And that's, so that's something that we'd have to think about.
I would envision these as neighborhoods with sidewalks, all the regulations we have now.
They'd be smaller neighborhoods.
Sewer, water, everything that we have now.
Well, that's what the mall would do.
Like, for instance, I
A bunch of residential
No, I'm just saying, that would be residential.
You could fit a one thousand square foot house on, on a ten thousand square foot lot very easily.
Yeah. Around ten thousand square foot's a very, actually is a very good size.
I know, it is.
Hundred by hundred.
And quite honestly, a lot of, a lot of the lots in town are already smaller than that.
Well, I, I think, I think that's, like, there, there is a precedent. And like, I think the consideration is not, not saying allow this across town. Like, I think like the R-44, R-88, like, the more rural parts of town, you know, those would be much better off lower density. So we're talking, again, like, the existing neighborhoods, like, those, those neighborhoods themselves, which may already have five or ten thousand square foot lots. So, I mean, I, I think absolutely
How much empty land do we have in an R-88 right now that's not being built on?
A lot.
Right, so
Because nobody can afford to build on them.
Right. So part of the issue here is, you, if you have smaller lots, you have smaller houses, you have less infrastructure, less roads. So these are, this is something that you might consider next to, say, the Scantic River and the TE slope. So you would maybe pull all of the development closer to the main road rather than have the lots expand all the way to the, the back where you would probably prefer open space. Maybe these are open space, small lot, open space subdivisions as, as, as one possibility.
We would have to be very careful in how we wrote those regulations then.
Of, of course, but we don't want to start, we, we don't, we don't, we don't want to waste our time on, not waste our time, but we don't want to spend a lot of time working on regulations that you don't even want to entertain. So we're just trying to get that from you.
I mean, I would rather see you spend time on this than the ADUs.
That's fine. That's, this is what we need to hear.
That's what I would rather see. Because you're really achieving almost like
Okay.
An ADU-sized building, a little bigger.
Terrence?
Yeah, I, I think with the smaller lots, we ought to take a look at them. But we also ought to take a look at them in a way to clean up some of the older neighborhoods that have all different sized lots and half of them are non-conforming. And see if we can make those lots into conforming lots, so people aren't always worried about non-conforming them. What the hell are you going to do with them?
Right. We have that listed here as well.
That's a bullet point.
The next slide.
So if you look at probably eighty percent of the, probably more than that, eighty percent of the lots that are in R-33 zones, they are all R-12 or R-17 or less.
Yep.
So we would like to come up with some sort of provision that makes them non-conform, makes their non-conformity go back to a conforming subdivision based on the regulations that were there at the time. And again, is this something that you would like or do you want to keep the non-conformity?
I think that's what we ought to do.
First, from my point of view, I would love to not have to explain what legal non-conforming means to every single person that comes in.
You got to reverse what the commission did back in the eighties when they, they, all they did is they blanketed across the whole town and said, everything that's R-17, make it R-33. Everything that's R-33, make it R-44. And that was ridiculous.
We, we would like to reverse that.
And you just got to reverse that.
They just took the easy way out.
That, that, exactly. It's crazy. It's crazy.
So, yay, we have
They're not taking this exercise that way.
We have a yes.
Yeah.
That's because they wanted to go home.
Yay. Okay, so, so another thing, we have for our multifamily housing developments in the multifamily housing development zone under four point seventy point six, the minimum acreage for a large apartment complex is sixty acres. Personally, if I was going to see an apartment complex, I'd rather see maybe fifteen or twenty, maybe twenty-five acres with small, you know, some smaller building, make it more like a village as opposed to a, like
Giant apartment.
A giant apartment.
Don't you adjust the, you adjust the density with, so, right now, we're sixty-eight.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't really affect the density. It's just that the minimum lot. So, I mean, it would affect the density in the sense that if you have sixty acres, you could have a hell, heck of a lot more
Right.
Sorry about that. Heck of a lot more apartments. But if it's only twenty-five or thirty, I mean, it's going to be a smaller community. It's not going to be as expansive. So, I mean, if we want to entertain more multifamily at all, I, I would suggest that we look at that and maybe make it a smaller acreage, maybe review what the regulations actually say and see how we could modify them to, I mean, if, if that's what you think you would like, if we're going to have apartment complexes, do you want them to be massive or would you like them to kind of be in little nooks and crannies and, and create their own little character?
Architecturally pleasing.
Yeah, yeah, well, architecture.
Versus the giant.
Based on what I heard during the Felician sisters.
Ken, your, your mic.
I'm sorry. The sixty acres was, was a very important milestone for the neighbors.
Yes.
And so I think that if, we have to be careful if we're going to downsize that.
We can restrict the zone.
Yeah.
Now, everybody's going to think that, you know, oh, boy, we're going to have all kinds of twenty-five acre apartment
No.
But would you rather have a whole bunch of sixty acre apartments?
Well, you're going to have, well, you're going to have fewer.
So, so in other words, you don't want apartments?
I mean, I, I don't know. That's
I mean, I don't know. That's, I think that's what it boils, oh, that's what it boils down to. How many apartments do we want?
Kenny, your mic.
I don't know how to, to say it without anybody getting the wrong idea. Villages don't work out. They're nice. They start out nice. Villages, the people stay in the villages. They all conversate in the villages. Villages don't work out. I haven't seen one yet. If you, can you tell me where there's other villages? Get around, like a South Windsor or Ellington or just anywhere.
Well, we'd like to explore that.
I don't even have to go out far.
That's part of exploring. The question is, are we exploring this or not? Yes and no, for the sake of time.
No, I'm not.
I mean, can I just, I mean, I think simple answer, yes, I think we should explore it. And I think going to the point, I think this goes along to the point about, like, I agreed we're not a city, and I think this is the way to manage that development. Instead of saying, oh, you know, a developer has to come in here, they're going to have to maximize 60 acres. They're going to put as big of a building as possible on it.
Yep.
And we're saying, we don't, we don't want to have massive apartment buildings or massive apartment complexes, and this is the way we can manage that through regulation. I would much rather see missing middle housing, which is much smaller scale. We probably don't need any of, like, the large-scale housing here, but it's the missing middle, which is, keeps, keeps Enfield a town, but is going to be built on lots smaller than 60 acres. So, and still have, you know, whatever restrictions, you know, density and height limit.
I've known...
And just another, just one more point, too. I think we're all getting caught up in rentals and just assuming they're rentals, but, and I'll let staff jump in as needed. But I mean, these, this could also open up the door to condos as well. Like, we're not, we're not regulating how, I mean, I guess we could, but condos could also fall under this regulation to say, you know, you can have, you know, a smaller condo association, you know, with, with, you know, partially, you know, connected units or maybe they are separate units like that condo association that came in last meeting. But, I mean, I think, I think those are the things worth considering here. And I don't, I don't, I don't like the 60-acre thing because, again, it encourages as maximum building. I don't, we don't, I don't think we should encourage maximum building. We should encourage, you know, smaller scale development.
And I don't know if you've gone down Route 10 and 202 from, well, if you go 20 out to 10 and 202 and you take a right, you're going to see a smaller build.
Are you talking Simsberry?
In, in Granby. It's a smaller area.
Okay, right across from the high school.
Whoever buys the land and it's, and it's a smaller piece of property, they're going to maximize the amount of, that they can to build, for the density, to make, recoup their cost. And then if you go to the left and go down, I forget, I think it's Hot Meadow Road, and going toward Avon to, on the left-hand side, again, you'll see the same thing, is, you know, massive amount of building in a small area. So...
But we can, we can limit that with the regulations.
Those are probably the ones in Simsberry, at the Simsberry-Avon line, are probably about 30 or 40 acres.
Yeah, and it's a lot right in that area. That's like...
So that's why we're suggesting maybe we make it a smaller acreage.
Yeah.
So you don't have this massive...
But it's massive. It's huge. It's a moat.
You can always edit the density.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't dwell on it because you can edit density. I'm just saying is, that's what it would look like.
I mean, really, how many 60-acre parcels do we have?
Not a lot. Most of them are open space.
Yeah, I, I think 60 acres is a little excessive. I really do.
It gives you more flexibility to, like, regulate the style and the architecture, like that kind of, that neighborhood feel to it when it comes in. Yeah, the New England architecture.
I'd be willing to look at downsizing that, but I don't know what the number is. Is it 40?
All right, we're exploring it.
We're going to explore this one, and you could nix it later, okay?
Yeah, that's it.
Lovely.
In buildings in Thompsonville.
All right, so let's just go to the last one. Thompsonville.
So we were mentioning the developers, so I got an email from Aaron because of TIF.
Yep.
There are people coming in to meet with him next week. Developers, more than one developer, to talk about Thompsonville. Just wanted to let you know that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. That is correct. So this, this development group that is wanting to do the North River Street project of apartments, they have, because of the site constraints, they would like to modify some of the regulations. And also just looking into the future, if they were to develop the EverSource property, they would like to modify some of the regulations. You know, we could always require some inclusionary zoning or something like that. Inclusionary zoning would be that if you were to build something, you would have to have X number of units that would be affordable. So it would be a requirement. So it's usually around 20% or 10% if you do something like that. But that's, that's not necessarily what they're doing. But we wanted to look at all of the different areas of the TOD that we might need to modify to make things easier and probably more transit-oriented development as far as, you know, parking standards, parking areas.
How could we encourage or loosen, I don't know, the regulations to have somebody make it easier for them to buy multiple lots, like, say, a whole street? A developer, buy a whole street and then bulldoze it and build...
Be up to the developer.
No, well, Ken, are requirements, do we, do we allow lot merger like that?
Of course we do.
Yeah.
I mean, do, without big red tape and bureaucracy where they can...
People can merge and split lots, and then usually a requirement of PCC approvals if a project involves more than one lot is to merge them.
Because I, because I remember there was issues where people were trying to combine lots.
And that might be a case.
And they got into a bunch of red tape.
But that may be the case as well, so...
And that's what I'm wondering, because really, you can't do nothing down there because they are 50 by 50s to do anything really extensive.
Right.
So you're saying now, if a developer can come in and they wanted to combine 10 lots, that's allowed?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sometimes the assessor merges lots under common ownership.
Just if they're undersized, if they're non-conforming.
Long as, because I think that's really the start, if they can go ahead and, you know, and that's up to the free market. The people want to sell, they sell. They don't, they don't. But if somebody with the money comes in and says, oh, just for example, I want to buy us Nuttix Street, and everybody that owns the property says, okay, that guy can combine all those lots.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
That's kind of what happened in South River.
That's what I would like to see, make sure that it's friendly to some, friendly to somebody that wants to spend the money, is what I'm saying. If an investor comes in, not scare them away.
Okay. So now you got homework.
This is just the beginning. So, I mean, we just want to, since we're doing the regulation update, we want to make sure that it gets updated to current standards. And we need to know from you what you want us to be focusing on.
It's like, yeah, because Lyndon mentioned, you know, they worked hard on the T-Ville zoning before. I don't know how many years back that was.
It was only, it was just before COVID.
So, and then that happened, other things happened, initiatives over the last 40 years, nothing's changed. So what, everybody's worked so hard on, including the last project they did, didn't do anything.
Yeah, but if people don't sell or people don't buy...
That's the next, that's the next conversation.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but before we get off of that, Frank, you are really interested in, in changing the height of structures in Thompsonville?
Yes. So my thought was to let the free market or let the developers come in so they can make money. Again, if they, if they put the investment in, because we had the parking issue, how high do they need to go to have internal parking off the street within the structure to make money? So if you build 10 stories, do three of them need to be parking? Because you can't, because there's, you know, we ran into the whole parking thing with that LeMagne area. So that's what I'm thinking is to, we control it, but we need to have a leeway for them to say, if I'm going to have subterranean parking, or I'm going to buy 10 lots and have onsite parking, I need to have this much income to make it work, I guess, is what I'm saying. Because we don't know what that number is. We don't, you know, as planners, how would we ever know? You know, if we say to somebody, we can only build so many stories, and you can't park on the street.
So are you thinking of just allowing the height to be whatever? Or do you want to set a maximum height, a maximum number of stories?
I would say right now, we have the leeway, whatever, but we have the leeway, you know, as, through a special use permit.
I don't want to see a 10-story building.
No. And I believe the reason we've always kept the height requirement to four stories in this area was due to the proximity to other houses and the ability of the fire department. I know since then, things have changed, but...
Fire department part is not even a problem because high-rise firefighting is done on the inside, not the outside.
I said, things have changed.
You don't need the ladder truck to reach the top of the building. That's all just things people used to stay out, throw out there for talking points. Don't even, there's not a city in the world that the ladder reaches the top of the building.
I just want to say, sometimes we get inquiries about roof amenities, like green spaces and roof bars.
Yeah, wait, for their green roofs.
Especially, especially along the Connecticut River, because we have such wonderful waterfront, but we don't have buildings with the height to allow such a thing.
So, that's what I'm saying. If we don't, if we keep it the way it is, it's going to stay the way it is.
Okay.
Nothing's worked.
So we can look at height requirements.
A way we can still control it with...
Yeah, we're going to look at that.
Yeah.
So let them do the research.
We can look at density, we can look at height, we can look at, and again, there's some, some other minor changes that they would like to see.
We can look at it. Doesn't mean it's passed when we go to public.
Absolutely. It's just, where should we focus our investigation?
Again, I make my point. Nothing's changed in 40 years.
Okay.
Can I just, can I just make, just one quick thing on the height? I'm curious if there's any existing regulations that are, like, relative to kind of like what exists? Like, 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 let's say, what is the building?
A comparison of heights?
Building 6 on Withward Street, Bigelow Building 6 is really, if you look at the back of it, it's six stories.
Right. So if we're saying, like, oh, like, we, you know, we've, we've approved six-story buildings before, you know?
It's was there already.
Or, yeah, so that, that's there. So that, you know, that does, in that area, fit the architectural character of the neighborhood. So is there like a way to be relative to, you know, that way? I may, you know, there is like a fear of, you know, going too tall to say, we don't, we don't necessarily want to let it too tall, but we want to have some flexibility.
All right. Well, let them look into that, and, and we'll see.
Because you don't know what the number is.
Okay, all right. All right, we're going to move on. All right. So you got your homework, and...
Where are we on the agenda?
We're on outside correspondence.
I have one more thing.
Stop giving me paper.
So, so this is great. So, so we told you about the D-Pratt, which is the American Planning Association Design and Preservation Rapid Assistance Team. This is where we've got national planners and local planners coming to help us work on our Thompsonville regulations and, and goals and implementation strategies. You are all invited, and we would love for you to come to attend the October 21st stakeholder engagement meeting. Basically, what these planners are going to do is talk with the community, talk with the stakeholders, and try to get the, the ideas from them as to where they would like to see Thompsonville go. They're going to look at the 40 years of all of the data that you were just talking about. It's like, we've got all this stuff, and we don't, we've never done anything. They're going to try to take all of the studies that we have and come into a cohesive ball of, of information, and out of that, try to come up with some sort of implementation strategy to achieve the goals that we all come up with. So on Monday, October 21st, from 1:30 PM on, I think most of the afternoon, in the Skidco Room, if any of you can and would like to come, we would love to have you come so you could talk with these planners. They're, they're high professional planners, designers, and conservationists.
This is 6 to 7:30. We just said 1.
Look on the second page.
Look on the second page.
And then on October 21st, there's, there's also the community input meeting, which you can also attend. But the community as a whole is not invited to the stakeholder meeting, so we would consider you the stakeholders. And then on October 22nd, there's going to be a meeting just kind of as a wrap-up. And October 22nd at 5:30, they'll present their initial recommendations and findings. So this is actually super exciting.
Super.
I mean, this is, this is incredible. We were the only ones in the entire nation that got this grant. Aaron Markovich, our new economic and community development director, just kind of saw it and said, huh, maybe I'll just try this. And he got it, and this is, this is fabulous. This is, this is like, this could be a game changer for Thompsonville. So as you were just talking about, it's like, we have all these plans for Thompsonville, and all these studies have been done, and they're going to look at them all and try to, like...
Yeah.
So, you know, we're extremely excited about this, and we would really love for any or all of you to attend these sessions.
The public share.
So, that's all I have.
Okay, that's, so that's the outside correspondence, huh?
All right. No, that was director's report.
Okay, all right. Any outside correspondence? Commissioners correspondence? Okay, I do have actually one thing. No, it is. It's very quick, very quick. And I, and I know there's a lot of people that are here that are new that have no idea, but in the past, we have always had, for our public hearings and our site plan reviews, the date of receival, and for the public hearing, the must-open date and the must-date, uh, closed date underneath the, the little thing here that says public hearing, blah, blah, blah. I would like to see that come back so it gives us an opportunity to know how long we have to react to something and not feel pressured like, oh, well, our clock is ticking. So...
Could we add that in our memo for you?
No, just put it at the bottom where it says, where it says PH 317, and it's right under the, at the very end, and just add that one line. Date of received, must open, must close.
We need more reaction, Dave.
Right, so that...
That's kind of what I was talking about before.
So that we have that, so that we know that. Yeah, it was always on there before, and I don't know how it got taken off. Other than that, nothing else. We have no old business. We have no new business. SPR 1942. I have no idea what a battery energy storage system is, so that's why I wouldn't let you just do that.
No, no, no. It's actually put in the wrong spot on the agenda. This was received on 9/26, so it should actually be item 9B.
Okay.
That's why I wanted you to move it.
All right. So give us a little explanation about this.
Right. So, okay, this is for Three Muff Road, which is owned by the Enfield Club Properties Association. There is a existing fitness center there, an in-ground, an indoor pool, and they are proposing to do a, it's kind of like a larger type generator in a sense. It's this little battery pack that they want to put on the side of the building. There's going to be screening. It'll be 13 evergreen trees for screening. This is part of the Connecticut goal of carbon neutral by 2040 plan for them, and this is part of the Connecticut-Green Bank and EverSource's Joint Energy Storage Solutions Program. The owners have decided to take part in it, in which case the battery generates electricity not only for the owner, but also goes back into the grid. And then it also helps provide electricity to the building should the building lose power. Construction is estimated for 2025. It's a accessory use to the existing business. It's going to be basically on a slab with a transformer, and it'll basically beat the battery unit and killery electric equipment. Existing stormwater is not going to be changed. Everything will maintain existing flow. Any disturbed... disturbed areas will be seeded and mulched, it has a 20-year durability, and no changes to parking requirements, no changes to the site layout besides adding this little battery storage on the side.
Okay, quick question, is it a lithium type battery, and if so, does our fire department have the ability to extinguish that?
So, if you give me a moment to pull it up on OpenGo.
That is a concern.
Health tracks you're talking about, right?
Right.
All the departments get tagged in for review, even if the application isn't admin, let me just pull it up for you, all the, all the reviews have been completed by all the other departments, let me see if I can find that out. Just give me one moment, please.
Yeah.
So the fire marshal said, I will approve this, fire lane shall be maintained on the west side at all times, collision protection may be required, but can be determined later when they apply for their building permit. The battery, let's see if I have that information. Yeah, it's, um, hang on a second, it's in the box. It's 700 and, 0.775 megawatts, and includes a battery unit and, and killery electrical equipment. It actually does not specify.
It doesn't specify the type of battery.
Give me, it probably, I just have to find it, give me one second. I remember reading something, I just didn't.
Do you have batteries outside? Not good. I know.
I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for that question.
It doesn't say.
I'm sure that, you know, if the fire department had an issue, it would be held up during the building permit stage, we're looking at this more from a zoning perspective. I can't find anything specific, but if you'd like, I can go back and ask them.
Yeah, that would be, I think it's, it's something that we should know about.
Okay, so don't do the admin approval tonight, wait until the next meeting?
Yeah, please, because we, we would like that information, because if even going through the building permit, and then we find out that the fire department says, no, we can't put that fire out.
Well, then it would be rejected, essentially, so.
Right, but, I'm just saying is, but I think we, as, this is a new technology, we need to have some understanding of it. Okay, other than that, we have no unresolved issues, no executive session.
All should adjourn.
Check it, check it.
All in favor? All right, all right, it's over, it's quarter after 10.